Okay, good morning, good morning. And welcome, it's August 3rd. And this is a meeting of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors and welcome to your boardroom. And I'd like to ask now for a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Foote.
Here.
And Supervisor Long.
Also here, thank you. Next, I am very pleased to invite up Margaret Travers and Zoe Lemieux, who's going to give us a moment of inspiration. I know that most, all of us know, please come on up, that Queen Margaret is the queen of our Ventura County Arts Council, I'm gonna call her Queen Margaret from now on. She has been just the leader for our Ventura County Arts Council for years. She's been honored by many in the county for her excellence in the arts and her work with many artist groups. She's currently working on the newly formed Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative Executive Committee and also with the Arts Alive and Ventura County Initiative of the Ventura County Community Foundation. And this morning, she was so pleased to be able to invite Zoe Lemieux to our boardroom. Zoe will be a junior at Westlake High School. She sings with the premier choir vocal ensemble. She is also very much an athlete in that she is on the track team in jumping events such as long jump, triple jump, pole vault. She was top gun this year, meaning she scored the most individual points for her team. And she has been writing poetry since she was four years old. She writes and sings her own songs and has a variety of other skills. And Margaret was very gracious to invite her to our boardroom this morning for a moment of inspiration. Margaret?
Thank you, excuse me. Thank you very much, Chair Long, and good morning Supervisors and Mrs. Robinson. I'm very happy to be here. Usually when I get a chance to talk about the arts, it's about our, on behalf of our wonderful professional arts and arts organizations. We are certainly proud of the increased attention our arts community has been receiving from our residents and from the media. And we are pleased with what this higher profile does for the bottom line of our communities. But today I want to focus on the artists in all of us. For the past two years, the Ventura County Arts Council has partnered with the Ventura County Community Foundation in an initiative funded largely by the James Irvine Foundation called Arts Live in Ventura County, or Arts Live. I'm not sure how we're supposed to pronounce that. It goes back and forth. As part of that initiative, an I Am The Arts poster campaign was born that features members of our community who do one thing to live, to pay the bills and put food on the table, and something else to exercise their creative side for their own enjoyment. You know, to satisfy a need, to exercise their creative bone. We all have it, it's next to our funny bone. And what are some of the activities that you can find here in Ventura County which to exercise your creative side? Everything from quilting, to singing, woodworking, to playing the cello, writing poetry, to mariachi music, folk dancing, to community theater, museum docenting, to oil painting, and stone sculpture, to barbershop singing. We are rich with offerings for our community arts organizations. I have a list here of nearly 200 of them who exist to provide creative opportunities for members of our community. Most accept participants in all stages, novices to reentry mavens. For instance, do you like to sing? A few of your choices would be Gilbert and Sullivan, barbershop, Renaissance music, opera, and everything in between. Whatever you have a hankering to do, there's probably a way to do it right here, close to home. Please give us a call at the Ventura County Arts Council Office. We're in the book. And we are happy to help you get in touch with your creative bone. And now I would like to turn the microphone over to Zoe Lemieux, who's a very talented poet. Zoe?
Thank you, good morning Zoe.
Hi. It's called journey. It's always hard to take that first step, to close your eyes and hold your breath, to put your feet on the edge and count to three, and to wait for the world to stop spinning. It's always hard to open your mind, to let go of the time, and to look inside, to live in the dark and search for a sign, when all you ever wished for was a chance in the light. It's always hard to hold your head high, to really feel the smile and enjoy the ride, to appreciate the good and truly breathe, to let it all go and fall asleep. So hold out your hand, get lost in your heart, and just wait for the rest to come undone. Because if you hold out your hand and forgive and forget, then the only hard part will be the first step. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Zoe, thank you. And that's Zoe's mother filming. Thank you so much, that was, I enjoyed it immensely, thank you. Happy to have you here, Margaret, again, always for your work with the Arts Council. It's appreciated.
And I just also want to thank Zoe, as I know, trying to balance choir and track and all is very difficult. You still have Mr. Rose there, yeah, that makes it even more difficult. But I know that you're doing a great job and congratulations.
Again, thank you. All right, board, well now, let's have our pledge of allegiance and Supervisor Zaragoza, would you lead us?
My allegiance to the United States of America and the free republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, this is, where are we? Agenda review.
Minutes.
No, oh, minutes, minutes, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a move, excuse me, move that we continue the minutes to eight, ten, the next meeting.
Motion second to continue the minutes to our next meeting. Please vote. Yeah, passage unanimously, okay. Now, agenda review.
Yes, Chair Long, there is an addendum, Agenda Item Number 37, from the County Executive Office, and it is to commence the public hearing regarding adoption of the 2010 through 13 memorandum of agreement with the Ventura County Professional Peace Officers Association, and to set the public hearing on August 10th. That was provided to your board and has been posted. Agenda item on page eight, item 32, there's a revised title. And consent, Agenda Item 15, there's a revised Exhibit F. And I believe that's all the changes.
Okay. Are there any other changes from board members, or requests?
I'd like to pull item 16 and then we'll get to the consent calendar.
Okay. All right, shall we adopt the agenda as revised?
One minute.
Second, motion second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. All right, then we have our consent items 10 through 19. Supervisor Bennett asks that we pull 16 for discussion. Any other request on the consent? All right, why don't we pull 16 for discussion?
Okay, and I may ask us to pull it for another week to get more information, but had a, but let's just see, I had a short conversation with Matt Carroll yesterday as we were doing Agenda Review. And my question for the CEO's office, for Jeff Pratt, who put this letter on, I'm not sure that I know what we're doing here. We have some capital improvement projects listed, we don't have all of them listed. Why some? I notice like, you know, SCR3 is not listed in the, back in the back, but other projects are. And then, what, you know, this is, this, on the one hand, it says, you know, we want to ensure compliance with, general plan conformance, recommended action is just to receive and file, doesn't actually say, you know, that it recognizes the conformance. And then, I don't know whether this is approved, whether this has anything to do with how we're gonna fund these projects, so can you try to frame this, and if it's better for us to do this in another week, I'm happy.
Sure. I'll give you just the background. The CEO or the capital plans that aren't specific to Public Works that are included on here are just those non-IT projects that are anticipated will be brought to your board for consideration this year, and that may have some general plan impact. So they're listed in this, in this Public Works Board letter because they potentially have a general plan conformity impact, although you'll see many of them have not been reviewed for that at this point in time. There, it's just a receive and file at this point in time. None of these projects has debt service included in the debt service budget at this point in time, because either A, they're in out years, such as the hospital retrofit would have no, it certainly have a general plan conformity impact, but it has no budgetary impact this year. The single items that are included in the general fund debt service budget this year are the Accela program and a traffic light out at the Satacoid JJC. None of those are listed in here, because again, these are just those that have potential impact for general plan conformity. They're like, almost all of them are in out years, so there's no budgetary implications this year, but we needed to just include them in the scope of this letter. So they'll all be brought back for detailed hearings, and then, at the time you have the detailed hearing, they'll be mapped against the debt service capacity and what the debt service burden would be if you approved them at this point in time relative to other projects. So they're really just a, almost a technicality for including them in the board letter at this point.
And what do we mean by general plan conformance?
I, I'll leave that, my knowledge of that is such that there is an impact with inconsistency with the general plan, such as you're going out and putting a hospital in, or, that's a bad example, a major new facility in an area that is inconsistent with the general plan zoning, or other implications in that area of the county.
So by identifying this, we're identifying some consistent, we're creating, we're making sure we're consistent?
We're making sure they're on the radar scope and that they will be reviewed for general bank plan conformity as more details of those projects.
And why are some projects not on here?
Well, most of the general plan projects that aren't on here are IT projects, and they have no general plan implications.
But how about SCR3, for example?
Good morning Chair Long, board members, Ms. Robinson, for the record, Jeff Pratt, Public Works, SCR3 is on here. This plan is consistent with the plan that was shown to you last week for watershed. In fact, all the expenditures we plan to make, you know, over the next five years for Public Works, our non-capital projects are in here. But if you turn to pay, it's just not called SCR3, that may be the confusion, it's called Santa Clara River downstream of 101 in here.
Okay.
And it's shown as Zone 2.
Okay. So are all of the watershed projects in here?
Not all of the projects, just those for the next five years. So you remember in the presentation, you saw below the line, those that fell in the out years. For example, one that was discussed at length was in Supervisor Parks' area, where it's still on the list, but it's not in the five-year plan because of its ranking.
So we're recognizing what's, what's above the five-year plan of this action?
That's correct. That, what's in the five-year plan.
Okay. I guess, I guess I just would like to make sure I understand that. Madam Chair, is there any, is there any reason why we have to do this today and not next week?
No, there's not.
Can we put this back on, even for the consent calendar next week? I'd just like to make sure I've, I'll review that. Thank you very much, yeah. All right, so I'd move the consent calendar with item 16 postponed one week, you'll come back on the consent calendar. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All right, then that passes unanimously. All right, at this time, we have an opportunity for public comments. Do we have any submittals for public comments, Madam Clerk? No public comments? Okay. All right, then we'll move right ahead to board comments. Supervisor Foote.
Thank you. Just a couple things here. I know that Supervisor Parks and I had the pleasure of being at the Ronald Reagan Library the other day when they signed legislation celebrating President Reagan's contributions to the state of California. And the bill established made California Ronald Reagan Centennial Commission, which is gonna be tasked with honoring his 100th birthday coming up here on February 6, 2011. And the bill officially designated February 6 as Ronald Reagan Day, during which public school and education institutions will hopefully take a look at some of the things he did and also other presidents that had big, major contributions to this, to this state. I also like when they do that, because a lot of these kids never know who's gonna grow up and be president one day. It's a, it's a real opportunity, so. Anyway, that was, that was kinda fun to, to see. Also, I'd like to adjourn in memory of people on this list, and one of them, as a lot of us all know, which was Keith Richmond, who was an assemblyman out of the 38th District, which included part of my district and Santa Clarita, San Fernando Valley. A man who was a businessman, a doctor, who had done a lot of things in his life and gave back to the community and to the state, worked very hard to improve what he could and do. And as Supervisor Long said, he was always engaged, and I think that's a good way of looking at him, a guy that was always engaged, working very hard to do what he could do. Matter of fact, we're talking about pensions, a little bit of that today, this was a man who was working on this for a long, long time, ahead of the rest of us, understanding that the issues were gonna come and be a very difficult thing for all of us. So he died on Friday in a Los Angeles hospital, but, you know, all of our thoughts and prayers go out to his family. But he was a man that I think we all respected, so. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks?
Yes, I agree with your comments on Assemblymember Richmond and how easily accessible he was to, that I can give him a call, I know I was working on the hospital issues in my district, trying to get another hospital in, and he was very supportive. I'd also just comment on a couple of things that were going on in my district. At our Santa Rosa Valley Municipal Advisory Council meeting last Thursday, the general manager for the Canadian Recreation and Park District, Jim Friedel, came and discussed the Santa Rosa Park and their willingness to operate and run it if the community is desirous of that, and the potential of understanding the annexation issues that would, would have to be done in terms of having the CRPD annex areas of Santa Rosa Valley so that they can get operating revenue. So it was being discussed in our, the community, and my mission is to make sure that anything that goes there, the first thing that happens is it gets completed, because the park is right now in Phase 1, Phase 2 is the equestrian facilities, so they can have equestrian shows. Also, let's see, last night, Fire Chief Roper was in my district and presenting to about 30, maybe 40 people who showed up, a wonderful presentation about becoming more fire safe in your homes, and really did a lot of personalizing touches in terms of had Google Maps available, so, I think it was Google Maps. So we'd actually, people who wanted to have their houses looked at and the open space around it and understand some of the issues involved and where a fire might be coming, were able to actually see their house up on the screen on Google Maps and have it described about some of the issues that they should be aware of. So that was really helpful, and hopefully as he goes around the county, more and more people will get involved, and if they want to know, they can always call their local fire station too, and they will come out and give an assessment of things that they can do to make their homes more fire safe. And it's a good time to do it before fire season hits, if there is such a thing here. So really appreciate Fire Chief Roper for coming out there. And that concludes my comment.
Thank you. Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you, and I'd like to adjourn in memory of the individuals on this list. And also had a great weekend, you know, just my grandkids are gonna be heading back to Texas next week, early next week, after being here a month. We love them, however, I think they, they wanna go back now.
So do you.
And also had a chance to stop by over on Wisconsin Olive Street at the Methodist Church. And one of the things that some of the stakeholders and the residents, the city core, they're, they actually planted a garden for the, to help the rescue mission for share, and they have raised over 2,000 pounds of vegetables, tomatoes and lettuce and cabbage, and the cabbages are so big, they're just beautiful. Have you seen those cabbages that grow there in Oakshard? You wonder how, you know, it's so important to have that fertile land, but they're doing such a great thing, you know, there for, for the community. And additionally, you know, the, I went over to the Santa Clara Chapel Fiesta there in El Rio. That's one of the biggest fundraisers that they have every single year, and there's thousands of individuals and family members having a great time there at the, at the chapel. And I understand they raised a couple of thousand dollars there for, for the community. The other thing too is that over in Nyland, our Annex, you know, the, currently it's going under renovation, they, they're gonna put an annex, a, they're fixing up anyway, the whole annex for this month, and it'll be ready again for use in September, you know, for, for the children there in Nyland Acres. So we continue to, we'll continue to provide the programs as are much needed there in the neighborhood, so. Anyway, we had a nice weekend, did numerous other things, but I probably take all morning just to mention them. But thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. I'd like to adjourn in memory of the people on this list and also join my colleagues in recognizing Keith Richmond, I thought he was one of those independent thinkers that, that people of all political persuasions could find some things that they had in common with him and work with him on and stuff. Certainly, he's a loss to the state of California. I'd also like to mention that I attended the American Cancer Society fundraiser in the Santa Rosa Valley on Sunday evening, and Supervisor Long was one of the table sponsors, and it was a very successful event. And it's just great to see people really pull together for another one of those things that takes us from being a place to a real, there was a real sense of community there that evening. And I want to thank Supervisor Long for her longstanding support for the American Cancer Society.
And she had the best hat.
She did, as a matter of fact, right.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was a great event, they had a significant turnout and it, people from all over the county, and it certainly benefits the, the great work of ACS, and, and I'll segue with that into an upcoming ACS event that I am also a sponsor and that I am co-chair of the committee that's putting this together, and it's called Make Strides, and say, Making Strives, and it's a 5K walk, and it's Saturday, August 21st, and I have a team called The Long Strides. And, and I hope that you all would consider supporting my team, and anyone out there listening who'd like to still join the team, there's time. August 21st, it's a wonderful, it'll be a beautiful Saturday morning, I'm sure, at the Ventura Harbor Cove Beach 5K walk, it's not a run, and it will be great fun, it benefits, again, all of the good work of the American Cancer Society here locally in our county. And I'll mention it again next Tuesday, our last meeting of the month. And also, I'd also like to give a plug for Wings Over Camarillo Air Show, which is August 21st and 22nd, the end of the month. It's the 30th anniversary of the Wings Over Camarillo, and it is a, a local air show that is at the Camarillo Airport, and it's the, it has a draw from all over the state, and it's a wonderful air show. On top of that, next weekend, as our fair kicks off, actually this weekend as the fair kicks off, the Point Mulholland Air Show also takes place. So we have a busy month of August, lots of wonderful activities for people to get out and enjoy the, enjoy Ventura County. And my, my comments on the loss of Keith Richmond, he, he was a remarkable man, as has been said, very independent, was someone who could, didn't just reach a hand across the aisle, he walked across and walked back and walked across and just continually trying to bring parties together to resolve very difficult, still yet very difficult issues at the state of Calif, with the state of California. He was very passionate about his work. We didn't always agree with him, when he was tackling, early on, tackling the pension issues, we took a contingent of folks to meet with him and talk about how we do things here in this county and how successful we've been. And, but he, he carried his professional expertise to the state of California also, and, and made pieces of healthcare benefits and healthcare programs within our county and our state system a priority. And he, he, he always had a door open. Again, if you didn't, you didn't always agree with him, but he was, he was an independent thinker, and it's, I, I thought it was unfortunate when he chose not to continue public office, and certainly thoughts and prayers go out to his family. And a young man, loss of a young man, frankly, with a terrible, terrible illness, so. Join, join you in that Supervisor Foote, and with the rest of the board. And I also have a list to submit for those folks in the 3rd District that we also lost in this last week, clerk of the board. And that will conclude my comments. Oh, real quick, just, just to say, Balloon Festival in Santa Paula, went out there on Friday night, a thousand people, it was amazing, it was just a, just a wonderful event that's been pulled together, and it's only the third time, and then the balloons did go, they glowed in the evening. They did not get full flight on Saturday morning, but in conjunction with this, there was a 5K Run Walk that was to benefit our Santa Paula Hospital, that was connected with the, with the festival on Saturday morning. And I know some of our leadership from HCA participated in that, and just good stuff, good stuff for the Santa Clara Valley and for all of us, and again, in the county. And I hope the balloon festival continues. This crazy morning weather's just got to go away. That's the lead, has to go away. That concludes my comments then. Anything else?
And I just wanna comment on the balloon festival also, I mean, I think that's, that's one of those kinda things that can really define the Santa Clara Valley. I think it's, it's so joyful and positive, and it reinforces ag, I mean, you can't be flying these balloons and landing them in residential neighborhoods, and it just works really well for everybody.
And the fun of that Friday night event is that was families, lots of kids, and they're just in awe with the balloons, of course, and there were 16 balloons that glowed Friday evening, to see them just sitting on the ground, just a delight. Just good for the valley, very true. Okay, that concludes comments, then we will move ahead to our regular agenda, and we have up our first item, which is Item 29, Fire District Item. Get, be able to get through these quickly. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and CEO Robinson. My name is Mark Lorenzen, Deputy Chief with the Fire District. I'm here before you today to ask for your approval to appoint two new members to the Fire District's Board of Appeals. Ordinance 26 requires that we have a five-member Board of Appeals to review any appeals from the public regarding our interpretation of the Uniform Fire Code. Our recommendation to you today is that you appoint Ed Foster, who is the Fire Marshal from the Carpinteria Summerlin Fire Protec- from the Carpinteria Summerlin Fire Protection District, as our Fire Representative, and William Klepper as our Public Representative. Any questions?
Is there any questions on this item? Okay, I don't hear any. There's a motion, a second, to adopt the recommended action. Please vote. And that passes four with one absent and, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 30, this is a IRWM. Speaking of the queen of IRWM, good morning, Ms. Hughes.
Morning Chair Long, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson, Sue Hughes with the County CEO's office, and today I am wearing the project director hat of the WCVC IRWM. As you might recall, in October of 2007, your board accepted on behalf of the Watershed Coalition of Ventura County, $25 million for 11 projects that are, all throughout the county. The reason that I'm before you today is one of those 11 projects was a project that was submitted by the City of Camarillo, $5.5 million for part of a recycling plant. Only as time has elapsed, they realized that that plant that they expected to cost $18 million now looks like it's going to be something in the neighborhood of $30 million. Plus, they realized that they were going to have to get a bigger water allotment out of Fox Canyon groundwater, so with a little review, they came to us and said, you know, we really think due to the cost of this project that we're not going to be able to complete the project. Thank goodness for them, they hadn't spent any money on the project. So we went back through the usual process that we use through the watershed councils and through the Cuyahoga Creek Watershed Steering Group, and they went through their process and determined that the best project to replace the Camarillo project was one more section of the salinity management, what I call the brine line, for Cuyahoga Creek Watershed, or for Cuyahoga Creek Municipal Water District in the Cuyahoga Creek Watershed. So it went through the process, went to WCVC, and then we wrote letters to the state asking that if it was appropriate that we could replace the Camarillo project with the Cuyahoga project. But because that's $5.5 million and we have to do a couple of other things, that's why I'm before you today. So we need to, we have a grant amendment that we're asking that Mrs. Robinson be allowed to sign. And then we will terminate the subgrant agreement that we have with the City of Camarillo and develop a new subgrant agreement with Cuyahoga, so that we can replace that $5.5 million, thus keeping all $25 million of that $25 million grant in Ventura County. And I would like to report that of the $25 million, we have spent and asked for reimbursement in the amount of $15.5 million. We have five projects of the 11 that are completed, all three projects in the Santa Clara River, the El Rio Project, the City of Ochsard Project, and the Fillmore Project, all completed. That totals $9 million right there. The Simi Valley Waste Water Treatment Plant, or Recycling Plant, that is completed. And the one section of the brine line that is the winding outfall, that has been completed. All the other projects are in some percentage of completion. The grant expires the first quarter of 2012. So I'm just here to ask you, can we substitute the project and allow Marty to sign the amendment to the grant?
I'd just like to make a comment before there are any questions, in that this process that was set up, and it really set up around this original grant, it's just really served us well. I think it really brings the regional players together, the regional discussion, thinking, and then as we see the agreements, so. I appreciate, and I know it's a lot of yeoman's, yeoperson's work in bringing all those cats through. Questions on this item? Yes?
What, what happens to the other project that grows from 18 to 30 million dollars?
They are reworking the project and working within the Cuyahoga Creek Watershed and Steering Committee to figure out how best to do that project and they're, they're trying to work it on a regional basis and connect to the salinity management pipeline as opposed to doing what they were doing. They're reworking the entire project, as I understand it.
And the other thing is, 18 to 30, 60, 70% increase, what was the issue?
I don't know what the issue was.
That's scary that we approve something like this thinking that it could be that, because what would happen if it would have been started?
Well, I think part of what happened with them too was the realization that they would need to pump more water out of Fox Canyon. And I don't know if that was part of the increase. I don't know enough of the details of what happened with the City of Camarillo project. I just know that it became evident to their council that it was going to be too expensive to move forward because their grant was $5.5 million, but with a project that was $18 million, that seemed more doable, I guess, to them than when it was going to be $30 million.
Right, okay.
Mr. Pratt, do you have any info on that? Not to speak for Camarillo, but just generally, I'd, I'd have to believe that there are probably a variety of things, one, they may have under-costed it too.
Thank you Chair Long, again Jeff Pratt for the record. I feel like Fox Canyon kind of got thrown under the bus here. And it really was-
I did not throw them under the bus.
It was not, what it was, they didn't want to make the investment because they really didn't know what the yield was going to be in that basin. That's an area of the basin that has really poor quality water that they were going to pump and treat, but they really didn't have a long-range plan and they seriously underestimated the costs of the project. So it wasn't really a Fox Canyon issue in the sense that Fox Canyon stopped it from doing anything, it was just a planning issue for them.
Mr. Pacala is creeping up here also. He might have an opinion also.
I'm not throwing them under the bus, for the record. Mr. Pratt maybe, but-
Good morning Chair Long, members of the board, Reddy Pacala with the Water and Sanitation. The question was about the cost. My understanding is initially when they did the preliminary cost estimate, they did not do the water quality testing. Once they went in and did actual water quality testing, they found out they have to do additional treatment, so that's one of the reasons why the costs have gone up.
Supervisor Park?
Along the same lines, what is the, what's the percentage completion for the brine line? Will this funding lock it in or they are still needing a lot more?
They'll still need a lot more money. That's a, I don't know what the total cost of the project is, but it's a lot of money. This'll just, this $5.5 million does what they call Phase 1E and it's one section of it, so.
So, from what Reddy was saying here, it just puts a little concern that we're going along with a lot of these, these projects that, well, they didn't do this and they didn't do this, and how are we going to know that they're doing the right thing? Because what would have happened if this would have been just halfway in the middle of this and we're out of money and all of a sudden it's $30 million?
The way that it works with the state, if you don't complete that part, it would be a phase of the project, because they had put up, the City of Camarillo put up the match at $13.3 million. So they said, we'll pay for the rest of this $18 million project. What happens with grants like this, if an entity is unable to complete it, they're obligated to pay the money back that they've been reimbursed to that, to the date, to date.
So we would have just had a half-done project and Camarillo down another $5 million. It just seems like that we didn't do enough, or somebody didn't do enough due diligence. I just, well, okay.
Do you have a more specific idea that brine line projects going to cost this many million and this is how many million has been expended or some-
Maybe Reddy does.
Do you know what the cost of the, it's IR-
Well, the SMPL brine line costs have changed over the years, as we all know, construction costs have gone up. At this time-
And they've also gone down, constructing costs have gone down.
Yes, but as of now, the Cuyahoga's estimated cost for the brine line is $120 million. That's from ocean outfall at Port Wayne Me all the way to Moore Park, where we are proposing the Moore Park Desalter Project. And so they're constructing this project in three different phases, Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3. Most of Phase 1 of the project has been funded and will be completed in the near future. The project that Sue is talking about would be for Phase 2, which would extend this brine line closer to Camarillo Desalter Project. That's what this proposed SMP project is for.
Do they have a timeframe when they expect to have the project completed?
Well, I have had some discussions with the previous general manager and I was at the board meetings. The last time I'd had this discussion, they told me they hope to bring the brine line to Moore Park by Hitch Boulevard and L Avenue by 2014, 2015 timeframe.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Okay.
I have a question, I have a comment.
Okay, we have a motion to support the recommended action. And is there a second and then we'll move ahead with, yes. Okay Supervisor Bennett?
Yeah, you mentioned it about this project serving as well. I think, I just want to compliment Sue. She went from being sort of pulling the grant together to being the project manager for $25 million worth of projects, almost certainly at least a pseudo-project manager with, with some other people out there. But that's just an example of, I think, what we see oftentimes here in the county and that is staff just stepping up and saying, hey, this is good government and we have to do what it takes to make it work. There wasn't a lot of this isn't my job and this is their job and that kind of stuff. And so I just want to thank you very much for, for pushing this. But $25 million worth of specific infrastructure investment in water and water quality issues in Ventura County is a tremendous benefit for the citizens. And I think you hear it, just with each one of those projects, you see how much better off everybody's going to be because of those projects, so thank you very much.
Madam Chair, your work with Mr. Pratt, you didn't throw him under the bus.
No, but I'm going to later. And you know, I just, one other thing, we're about ready to start the process to apply for another 20-ish million dollars for projects in Ventura County through Proposition 84. So we've just now begun the process, the grant is due in January, so wish us luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote.
Sue, don't be asking for a raise after those nice comments.
Please vote. All right, and that passes unanimously on the recommended actions and again, thank you staff, excellent work. Item 31.
Good morning Chair Long, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. For the record, I am Bruce Beluski, the manager of the Integrated Waste Management Division within the Public Works Water and Sanitation Department. The item now before you is the annual county surcharge fee adjustment at the Simi Valley landfill for calendar year 2011. This adjustment is permitted by a board-approved agreement between the county and Waste Management of California and is the seventh consecutive year this issue has come before your board. The recommended fee increase of seven cents per ton is projected to raise waste collection rates for county residents by approximately one to two cents per month. Other county jurisdictions may experience similar or smaller increases to residential rates depending upon amount of waste that they ship to this particular landfill. General purpose revenues from this fee adjustment will increase by approximately $70,000 in the current fiscal gear, while total revenues will be approximately $2.5 million. That concludes my presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, other questions? Supervisor Park?
Thank you. The recommendation then is to go from the current rate of 2.48 a ton to 2.55 a ton. And they, it says that this is mandated, yes, in the existing agreement. I'm just wondering, is it mandated that we do the recommendation?
Yeah, well, what I think that the term mandatory is in the board letter is that it's mandatory that I come before your board and that your board review this issue and make a decision. It is not mandated that you increase the surcharge.
Okay, so that's kind of how I read it, but I know a few years back that this fund was the fund that I had board concurrence on, that it would be used for park maintenance and go to our Parks Department. And I, so I understand that's no longer the case and it just goes to the general fund and then the general fund is what's paying for the parks?
Yes, it's general purpose revenue. Your board, at one time, revenue of this sort actually went to this department for their operations and at the point in time we restructured that department, we also looked to see what was happening with revenue and we brought it in as general purpose revenue as it, as it is and as it should be, general purpose revenue. And then the board has maximum flexibility to decide what it wants to use it for.
And I guess should be is, is the point where, you know, I think it should be going to parks, so, but I understand the scene of perspective.
No, and that is certainly one of the options, as general purpose revenue, the board gets to make that decision about.
So do we are looking for a revenue stream at that point? Thank you.
Other questions? Yes Supervisor?
Is some of this money used also to comply with AB 939? Is it?
No, it's 100% general fund revenues.
Okay. And then of course then the additional couple of cents, whatever it is passed, is passed on to the cities and it's passed through to, to the, to the users, right, in the cities and the county?
Ultimately to the residents who live in a jurisdiction which ships all or some percentage of their waste to that particular landfill.
And it's a pass-through too then?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it doesn't have to be a pass-through to it. It is a cost to the, to the company who runs the landfill. It is a cost to the company who runs the landfill, doesn't require them to raise their gate rate.
No, well, it'll be figured into their gate rate, but then they have a cap as to what they're allowed to charge as their tip fee or their gate rate, which they may or may not go up to.
Right.
Potentially ultimately could go to the users.
That's correct.
Cannot exceed 5%. But these are, these, this is a surcharge just for county unincorporated. It doesn't affect cities at all. I mean, they, they deal with their own rates.
But potentially it-
No, no.
Affect cities because that's where the-
Right, any user of the landfill, anyone shipping material, any city which has a solid waste collection provider taking material to that landfill, that'll be figured into their rates, so it's any user regardless of jurisdiction.
Bruce, how much comes from outer county at this point in time?
Oh, approximately 30%.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Bruce. Have a question?
Yes.
Reading this then, this was part of an agreement that they would raise or come before the board to look to raise rates on a yearly basis, right?
Right, the initial agreement was signed in 2002, it was amended in 2004 to require forward approval for this surcharge.
So in this situation, we're just coming because we can raise, it's not based on we, we have additional cost and whatever, just, we're just here to raise rates because we can raise them up to this percentage based on the average of all the other?
That's, well, based upon contract is-
Contract, right. Right, so in one sense, this is just purely a, we can raise rates because we can raise rates?
That's exactly it.
Yeah, okay.
Actually, the market is, there's a market out there. We are using capacity, so this is based on comparing other, other landfills, is it not?
Right.
So there's a comparison of other landfills to make a decision about what's happening out in the market and what value there is to us about this revenue stream. Actually, in 2002, it didn't have to come to the board. In 2002, it was at the discretion of, you know, it was in the agreement and the director of the agency just could move on this. The change was to bring it to the board so that it could be a very open process relative to this, but it is based on what the market is out there.
I would just ask that the, when an agency director no longer had that authority, was it at the same time when it went to the general fund instead of to the department?
Ready?
Good morning again, Reddy Pacala with the Water and Sanitation Department. The agreement was entered into 2002, that's when all of the revenues were going to the general fund, however, department director has authority. 2004, there was an amendment, the amendment clearly required the department to come back to your board for getting this approval for the surcharge. We are talking about the surcharge, which is one of the component of the overall rates. As Marty mentioned, there are 29 landfills that we look at as part of our staff report, we file what's called a marsh report. That's how they establish, that's how the rates are established, the landfill. So, so if you recall, in 2004, the department was downsized and that's when all these changes have occurred and that's when I got involved in 2004 with this division. And, and this has been done for the last seven, eight years, as Bruce has mentioned. And what we are recommending- And what we are recommending to you is to go to the maximum 5%. That's what we are recommending to you, consistent with our past recommendations.
And the question I asked was, at the time when it went from the director to the Board of Supervisors, was it at the same time when the revenue went from the department to the general fund?
No.
That's my question.
No, no.
Thank you.
It's always been general fund revenue? Okay.
Since 2002 it was.
It was 2002 that it switched to the general fund?
Other questions? It's a motion to approve the recommended action. Is there a second?
You know, I was supportive of this when the funds went to the parks because I felt that, you know, it was a good match, that it was a good revenue source and gave me more confidence in the procedure. So, I'm not going to be supportive tonight, today, this morning.
One question, County Council. If we're raising fees, does that require a four-fifths vote? Or is it two-thirds?
No, not in this case.
Not in this case?
No.
Surprise, surprise.
There's a motion, a second, to approve the recommended action. Please vote. That passes on a three-two vote.
Thank you.
And thank you. I think it's one of those things that if we fall behind, well, my issue certainly is that if we don't have some regional support for all the landfills and decisions that we make regarding them, then somebody gets dumped on.
And then, it's also best to have small incremental increases and one big...
Absolutely.
Increase in the future.
Item 32. All right Supervisor Bennett, this is our joint item. And this is to receive and file an update on California First Program adopting a resolution in support of the congressional action. I think the board letter, I'll just start out if I might, the board letter really calls out what the issue is before us and that there was the program that was established by the state of California that looked at a funding mechanism to really incentivize local jurisdictions to install energy efficiency and renewable energy improvements through special assessments that are, that are part of what the community wants. Otherwise, it's not a mandatory. And it was, and we worked to set up a mechanism to do that, as did many in the state, and this is nationwide. And the issue has now been complicated by an action by Freddie May and Freddie Mac regarding underwriting standards. And because this has become such a significant national, well, importance nationally, there's been clear action proposed by our congressional leaders to find a mechanism in which we can move ahead with this incentivizing for energy efficiency and renewable energy improvements. And I think the board letter highlights the concern. I think that the resolution even more clearly does. This has been acted on now in the sense of a congressional resolution that has been sent to the President and the White House and signed by 30 or more congressional leaders to call on some legislation that will help to correct this issue related, that came about as a decision by Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. Supervisor Bennett?
I would just like to add, I mean, in this country, we just, we talk a great game about green energy and about moving forward, but we, compared to our competitors, we've done a pretty poor job of actually implementing policies that do this. I mean, it's not for, nothing that Germany, you know, leads the world in solar installations in their homes, but that's because they changed their policy so that people can actually sell the energy back to the power company, and so it makes sense for them to do that. But here, because of the power, the powerful influence of the power companies, they block that from happening and therefore they block green energy from getting implemented by private homeowners. Well, this is another attempt to try to push, to make it easier for private homeowners to be able to do this. And now we get another powerful, very powerful in Congress lobbying force that ought to not have the same power as they had before because Congress had to actually take them over, and that's Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. And yet they're still out there in opposition to what is clearly a good green energy policy, but it's just an example, just like with the power company. So, some large interest, putting their interest in front of what I think is a long-term benefit for the country. So, this is a resolution and it's fortunate that we have 30 people in Congress that are with us and trying to push this through, but it's not going to be easy to take on Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. It was not easy to take them on in the past, but this would be our small contribution in terms of trying to raise our voice on this issue, so.
Couple of other points I'd like to make. The California Attorney General case, the main point is that PACE financing is an assessment, not a loan. Assessments have lean priority under California law. And it, lean priority does not violate Freddie and Fannie's uniform security instruments in any way, so the California Attorney General is certainly active on this. The PACE program in our state, there are 28 of 58 counties who have either launched this or prepared to do so. And there are counties that have already financed nearly 1,000 projects. In Sonoma, over $30 million worth. In San Francisco, they've accepted applications. And Placer County, a rather smaller county, has estimated $4.74 million in energy efficiency, retrofitting and solar jobs at risk. And this does infect jobs. It is, it is a jobs issue when you look at a, using what were our funds to incentivize energy efficiency are now being put at risk because of, well, because of the action of Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. So Supervisor Bennett? We don't have any public request cards on this, any questions?
Measure recommended action?
No question, I just appreciate you bringing this to the board. I think it's a important item to have a voice on.
I will second the item, the motion. Please vote. And that passes on a four-one vote. Okay, now we have item 33. And board members, our computers are showing that we have speakers on, the last one is actually on this one. So, we are on item 33 and Supervisor Ford?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to bring this. We all have understood the issues of pensions and what the pension situation we deal with in California and throughout the country. It is a major issue that has caused dramatic, dramatic changes in how governments are able to operate. One of the things that's pretty interesting now is when you see a lot of different governments, and that could be local, state, whatever it's going to be, having to make choices in the field of, how do we keep teachers teaching our future generations to, how do we keep paying the cost of what we've promised people? And I think the key for us is, we've got to find a way to do both. And the key is, I believe, that doing something like this also helps us for one thing, and that is to keep our promises. We have people that are currently retired under pensions and people that are, as part of county government, city government, state governments, that have been promised a pension. And the key for all of us is to ensure that we can keep those promises. Now, doing something like this doesn't instantly change costs, there's no question about it. But what it does do is give security in the future that we know that if the public believes, and we as supervisors believe, and as the labor unions come together to negotiate union pension benefits, that we believe it's the right thing. Because what this would do is we'd have to go back to the voters and say, voters, this is why we believe this is correct and why it's important that we approve an increase in these benefits. Now, we in this county have done a tremendous job of controlling our benefits and we have not gone to some of the extremes that a lot of counties have. And I would say that to the CEOs who've led the county, to our current CEO, our past CEO, to these board members and some past board members, and also to the labor unions who have come and, you know, asked for some of those things but have been reasonable at the end, that they have not pushed some of these 350s and some of the things that have put a lot of counties in jeopardy of bankruptcy. And I think it's critical that we also understand that. But going forward, we do not know who will sit here at this board. We do not know if we'll have different leaders of labor unions and everything else. But at the end of the day, it is the voter, it is the citizen who has the burden of this debt. And this is different than salaries. A lot of people say, well, you raise salaries. Yeah, but we raise salaries, we say, next year, we think we're going to have this money and we'll pay you. And at the same time, if we don't, we may have to lay somebody off. We control that. When you do statutory benefits that we do not have any future control on, and it is something that we make on an amazing assumption, on a whole lot of assumptions. And as I sit on this retirement board and I see similar members of that retirement board here, we make a lot of assumptions out there, that we're going to get certain returns, people are going to live a certain length of life, that we're going to have retire at certain ages. All that stuff comes back to the burden of the citizen out there. At some point, if those assumptions don't work and they aren't correct, we'll have to pay. And we've seen that happen. We've seen that come to roost. And at some point, we're going to have to say that we believe that any increases, we believe it's important. Because sometimes people say, well, why would there be an increase? We haven't increased things in a lot of years in this county. We've done some things. But we've seen a lot of other places do it. And I'm just, all I'm saying in this ordinance or this measure that I'd like to put to the people, and we're not making this, I'm asking this board to say, allow the people of Ventura to ask them, is this something that you want to look at and you want to do? That after the Board of Supervisors negotiates with labor unions for a benefit level increase, that it's reasonable that we as a supervisor would come out and say, this is why, and the labor unions together would come and say, this is important. We believe for competition, to ensure that the citizens of the county have the services that they deserve. That's all we're saying here in this situation. We're not changing anything currently. We're not asking anybody to roll back any benefits. We're not changing anything anybody has. It's just that putting this on to the voters, that when they are willing to accept and verify and ratify what we've agreed to, and they're willing to say, I, as a voter, and we as collective voters and citizens of Ventura County agree to these pension benefits for the people who work for our county to provide us services. That's what this does and that's all what we're trying to accomplish here is to do that. And so what I would ask is that we as the supervisors allow the citizens of Ventura County to make that decision if they would like to have that happen, if they would like the choice in that. And again, if we go through historically, it would be a lot of years in between that. I don't see pension benefits rising for any reason right now. I believe that our board here has to understand, we've taken some steps to control the future cost of pensions so that we all can maintain a level of service that, again, that the citizens of this county deserve. So, I know we have some, some people would like to speak on this.
We do.
Or anybody else would like to speak?
Our CEO would like to speak to it.
Yes, the first thing that I would like to do is, I want to be sure that we're clear about Ventura County. And the supervisor has talked a little bit about where we've been in Ventura County. And I want to be sure that the public understands the difference between Ventura County and other counties in the state. Okay, let's see. To the right. So, what I want to point out here, and the star is, well, what I want to point out here is that this is from the Government Code related to 37 Act Benefits, non-safety. And on your left is the Government Code section, and we've identified, those numbers along there actually define potentially a group of counties who qualify to use that system. And you can see that Ventura County Tier 1 and Tier 2 are at the very bottom of this list. Tier 2 is at 1.9% at 60. You see every other county, every other system is higher, some of them substantially higher. And also higher than even the 2.17 at 60 that is associated with Tier 1. Kern County, as you can see, Kern County is at the bottom there, but they, I think, within the last 10 years, have implemented, up at the top, you see the section where it says Kern and Merced, they have implemented a richer retirement system. So, I just want to be sure that we all understand, when we talk about Ventura County, that we are not Orange County, we are not Long Beach, we are not Bell, we are not any of those people, and we have been extraordinarily responsible in our decision-making. And not that we haven't been criticized for this level. We have been, we have been criticized for this level. This is our safety, this shows us against our cities. So, you can see that in the 37 Act counties across the state, we are low. In relation to what cities provide in this county, we are lower. This is, those were non-safety, and I wanted to point that out because non-safety is really the largest portion of our population. This is also shows our county in relationship to the cities and the safety retirement issues. And then I also wanted to point this out because big numbers are floating around out there about what county and public employees make.
Marty, for people to understand, could you explain how the 2%, what the 2% is or the 1%?
Well, usually what you do is you take 2%, say if you had 30 years at 50, it's 2% times the 30 years, and that applies to your final compensation.
2% of your highest salary.
Right. 2% of what is called your total compensation. So, 2% times 30 equals 60% of your total compensation.
Madam Chair Marty, I'm not sure if you finished, but in your first, the first slide you said, let me see, they're at, for example, the Tier 2 at 1.9 at age 60, somebody that has that.
That would be 30, somebody who had 60, had spent 30 years working for the county, they get 1.9 times 30.
Which is about 57%.
Right.
Yeah, I was computing that. So, they would get 50% of their annual wages.
Their total compensation.
Their total compensation.
And while you're on that slide, if I could just ask, I appreciate that you've identified general government code, and there's a distinction, there's a reason why you're choosing these counties and not other counties. Could you just very briefly, there's a difference between charter counties and general law?
Right. There's two things. We're a general law county and we're a 37 Act county. There are some counties that belong to what is called PERS, which is, which most cities belong to also. So, there's a different retirement system. But these are the 37 Act retirement systems. And like I said, some of, this doesn't, I haven't, we haven't put all the names up there for each one of those code sections, so.
But these are the counties that are organized similar to us from a retirement system and follow similar laws that we have to follow.
Correct. And so basically, we are at the lowest level of all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? So, when we get to here, this gets to sort of what you were talking about in terms of, what does that, what does that really mean? This is the average salary, and this isn't at 30 years, but this is, if you talk to our retirement association and we say, what's the average yearly take-home for somebody who's in Tier 2? Well, it's less than $14,000 a year. This is an average, so they could have been here 20 years, they could have been here 15 years, so all of that, that is mixed.
Madam Chair, that's probably the majority of the employees that we have here in the county?
Well...
At least several thousand?
Remember, we have had Tier 2s for 30 years now, so most, so many of our people are retiring off Tier 2. We made this adjustment 30 years ago. So, most of our people are retiring off Tier 2. So these show the average, basically, an average yearly salary. And I'm focusing on Tier 2 because the majority of our employees are Tier 2. The majority of other counties' employees are under the enhanced benefit programs. And it's one of the reasons they're, they're having major problems. I also want to address the issue that, you know, we've talked about the increase in what we have to pay for retirement, and it has gone up. It's gone up in 10 years. The number of people that we employ has gone up in the 10 years, although it's been fairly stagnant for a while, for the last 10 years. stagnant for a while, for the last few years, but it's gone up just under 15%. Payroll has gone up. However, the biggest issue, one of the big issues surrounding why we're paying more right now than what we paid in 98, 99, is in the prior years, we've all talked about retirement, and one of the issues is what the retirement system earns, what percentage return. They need to make 8% to guarantee that they're meeting their fiduciary responsibility to earn enough money to provide the benefits that you talked about, Supervisor Foy. And what in fact occurred in the late 90s were several years of double-digit earnings. And so if you pick 98, 99, the county's contribution was probably at the 1% level versus at what is, let's see, what was probably a, what is now a 17% level, something like that. So this shows that in 98, 99, our one-year average earnings was 12.6, but the three years annualized was 17. So we had double-digit earnings. Come forward 10 years, and we've had nothing but, we've had double-digit losses. So as my friends at retirement say, the 1990s were very good for return on investment, and the 2000s are known as the lost decade. So we haven't made those kinds of returns. So a big impact.
If I could, while you're on the slide. So if you, so in 1999, we were at the end of five years, annualized return 16.8%.
Yeah.
All right, so that's, so if you were going to pick a time to identify one of our lowest contribution times, that would be, that would be just about the lowest you could pick, because it's after five years of double-digit returns, right?
I don't know that it is the lowest, but it is certainly in that.
One of the lowest that you could pick. And then if you pick, so primarily, what this would indicate is, the return on investments has a huge impact in terms of the contribution.
Absolutely.
And I would note that in Supervisor Foy's letter, that in the very first paragraph that he referred to, he chooses 1999 as the comparison to the 2009. Okay, thank you.
And I simply wanted to get those facts out there so that we understand what we're talking about.
Great. I don't know if you're with me on this or not, but I appreciate that, because that makes my argument 110%. Because what that shows is two things that you pointed out. One is that we have one of the lowest benefit levels in these 37 Act counties. So that's one thing. Which then puts future, higher pressure to move to averages with everybody else, which a lot of other supervisors' boards have done around the state. The other part is, which is the key here, is that, as Supervisor Bennett said, the major portion of this is what our investment return is. And we cannot guarantee that, but we make assumptions. And as we saw for 10 years, those assumptions have not come true, as the last decade you put out. So what that does then is put the pressure of this on to the citizens of this county. And so that's why this whole thing is important to me, is, the piece that she just showed, which I thought was so key, is that as being one of the lowest, if we were one of the highest, well, it's hard to, you know, nobody really wants to be the leader. But as one of the lowest, I'm sure out there, as we've seen over the years, a lot of the labor unions and people say, "Well, why don't we go up with the average of everybody else?" Well, this board has done a tremendous job, and the CEOs have done a tremendous job to manage that. We don't know the future of CEOs in the future, and we don't know the board in the future. Because it was at one point, when those other boards around the state made those decisions, say, "Yes, we'll go to three at 50, we'll make these big increases," or we've seen some of our cities do exactly the same kind of a thing, which puts us in a position. We've seen a lot of counties lay a whole lot of people off. We've been very fortunate to be able to adjust a lot, and we've done through a lot of attrition without having to have a lot of layoffs. Yes, there's 400, 500 less people working than we would have had from before, but we've been able to work through that. So part of this whole thing is to manage, and again, I appreciate what the CEO has done by showing that, because it does show that we have one of the lowest, so there's pressure to always move that higher. Second is, the big burden of this pension plan is us making that 8% return every year, and we know we haven't done that. We are fortunate this year that we did do, made almost 15%, which will help us. But over the other years, we haven't. So we have to, we have to understand that the burden of having to pay for this is on the citizens of this county. A lot of people say, "Well, we didn't raise their taxes to pay for it." You're right, we didn't. But how many sheriffs have we let go through attrition? How many people in the DA's office aren't there? How many other agencies have less people? They are paying it through the other side of that too, which is less services for the same amount of dollars. And it's very difficult, and you know, we struggle. And we're going to struggle for the next three to five years as we increase $20 million every year to pay for more of this pension, and hope that we get some greater returns that will hopefully, this line that keeps going up, year after year, starts to level off, and get back to, like Supervisor Bennett said, during those years when we had some good returns, and we didn't have those contributions. So anyway, that's how I see this, as an opportunity for us to ask the citizens who pay the bill, who are responsible for the long-term debt of 30 and 40 and 50 years, when these decisions are made. And at that time also, in this, is also that an analysis would be done when that is done, so that the public can see what the cost of an increase in the formula costs them over the years. My comments, I know you have.
Are there any questions before we go to public comment? Any other questions?
I have saved mine.
Okay. All right, then we'll move ahead with the public comment. If anyone in the public, if you haven't submitted a card, please do so quickly. Chris May. Yeah, it's not. Yeah, sorry.
Madam Chair, members of the board, CEO Robinson, Chris May, Ventura County Professional Firefighters Association. Thank you for the opportunity to address this proposal. We do have some concerns with it, and we hope that you would turn your attention to some of those. For starters, there are many factors that affect retirement contributions, and we have some concerns as to, with this proposal, whether or not, which of those items would actually have to go to the voters. There could be many, many unintended items that everybody comes to agreement on, that do not increase the base retirement benefit, but could serve to increase it in some unanticipated way. So further clarification is needed before we move forward with a proposal that would lock things in that way. Next, we believe that this very well would and could affect and delay the negotiations process. If something did have to go to a vote, elections are only scheduled every two years, special elections are very expensive, we wouldn't want to put that additional burden on the Retirement issues are complicated, they're important, they affect people's lives, and we just feel that they deserve a much more thorough discussion than would be allowed by bringing this forward, just with the last board letter, and making a vote today to pass this. A more thorough discussion is in order and is deserved by everybody who would be affected by this, including the taxpayers. As was noted in the presentation, the problems with the retirement system are not due to benefits increases in this county, they're due primarily to financial system problems, stock market, return on investment problems. Those are the issues that are causing the problems. And while it's true that you can't guarantee what future boards of supervisors or CEOs might do, for at least the last 30 years, those that have been elected by the citizens have made the choices that have kept this county very conservative, and again, as noted, near the bottom in terms of benefits. And finally, the employees just got through making concessions to help with this problem. What is probably a temporary problem as the investments recover, as they've begun to already, the employee groups, including the firefighters, have made concessions, permanent concessions, to help pay for the retirement system. So I think with all of that in mind, I would urge your board to not approve this proposal at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. May. AC Carvahal.
Good morning. Board members, Mrs. Robinson, thank you for giving me this opportunity to come here and talk, in reference to the proposal Mr. Foy has submitted to the board. My biggest concern with this ordinance is that, pardon the problem, when you get older, you gotta get some glasses here. The ordinance is, that is, okay, my biggest concern with this ordinance is that it will do absolutely nothing to address the real issue of Ventura County. Almost every other municipality in this country are seeing increases in their pension fund obligation. The vast majority of the pension plans in this country are reporting 85% of increased contributions. The employers will be obligated to make, are a direct result of the investment losses. Brought to us by the Wall Street bankers asleep at the wheel credit rating agencies, and the financial engineers who figure out how to create an asset bubble that bursts our economy so catastrophically. It seems to me that our boom-bust economy that is unsustainable, not the average 2,000 a month pension for grandma, who worked for the county for 30 years. The proposed ordinance is political, pandering, and a distraction of the real problem. As some of you may know it already, it's extremely difficult to make changes to retirement benefit in 37 Act counties. Ventura County is a 37 Act county. Currently, in order to make any changes, this must occur as follows. One, any retirement change must be bargained. Two, once bargained, it must be approved by the employer, board supervisors, and membership. Three, once approved, the 37 Act must be amended by the state assembly and senate. Four, if amended, the change to the 37 Act must be signed by the governor. Fifth, finally, if it makes it through all those hurdles, it must be approved again by the board of supervisors. Do you think any employer will be requesting changes in the formula in the economy? It's not likely, but even if they did, asked for the increase, it must be approved at all five of these levels. It's probably not going to happen. This recession is a direct result of the same Wall Street bunch who screwed up the whole economy and the earnings of pension and 401K funds. As a taxpayer from this county, I would like us to focus our time, energy, and limited resources, and engage with pension service providers and the money managers to develop investments alternative that protect our interests, both as beneficiaries, workers, and members of our society. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carvahal. Becky Linder.
My name is Becky Linder, and I'm a senior planner from the County of Ventura Planning Department, and a 30-year resident of Ventura, the city of Ventura. As my coworker AC stated, pension funds cannot continue to depend on the same Wall Street experts that created this recession. However, Mr. Foy's proposed ordinance is extremely harmful because it perpetuates the myth that public workers are to blame for the state budget problems. The recession and increased cost to pensions, the vast majority of public workers receive very modest pensions, and these pensions are very sustainable. The retirement benefit for public workers was not a gift. It's something workers have earned and negotiated. They negotiated with their employer. All research, costing, and due diligence was done at this time. These benefits were negotiated, and as you heard, there are safeguards in place to make sure that this benefit is sustainable as long as everyone plays by the rules. Public workers in this state have stepped up to the plate to help their city, county, and state employer over the last few years. Thousands of employee pensions positions have gone unfilled, thus requiring employees to pick up increased workloads. In addition, Ventura County employees took a 3% pay cut to save the county $2.2 million this year, and even more in the coming years. Public workers are committed to helping our communities, and the people we serve make it through this recession. However, it seems that instead of reforming the real culprit, which is Wall Street's irresponsible practices, the media and some government officials would rather blame the grandma next door, living next door on her 2,000 a month pension. We need to ensure that our economy recovers in a healthy and responsible way, so that pensions and other investments provide the safety net that we all need upon our retirements. We need to correct the mistakes by Wall Street, and we should stop pension spiking and double-dipping. I believe Mr. Foy's ordinance does nothing to address the real problems, and in fact, is just an abdication of his responsibilities as an elected board of supervisors. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you today.
Okay, Ms. Linder. Michael King.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, CEO Robinson. My name is Michael King, and I'm a county employee and also on the board of the Ventura Employees Association, a small union of about 150 people made up of appraisers and engineers. I'm not here to negate the fact that the state is facing problems with pensions. However, I do think that having San Diego, Orange County, and San Francisco's comparisons to Ventura is not fair demographically nor financially. As has been discussed through the actions of this board for the last 30 years, and because of pragmatic and cautious negotiations, we don't have the three at 50 rule. We have an 84% funded pension fund, even with the losses in investments. I'd also like to take a moment to focus on the difference, the two parts that make up our government. We have safety employees, and we have general government employees. While safety retirement does have a slightly higher retirement, the general government employees receive a more modest one, especially under Tier Two, as we've seen. There's also a difference in the public perception between public safety employees and general government employees. While general government employees or administration provides things such as senior care, public benefits, recorder services, watershed management, safety is held in a higher regard, because, let's face it, they do, they stop the houses from burning, they protect people on the streets every day. Also in general government, you have the general, just the ability to value, calculate taxes, and collect the taxes for the county, which is a huge source of revenue for the general fund, which goes to pay for safety. The general government employees gave up salary increases in the 1990s in order to get an increased retirement benefit. We now are giving up that pickup, that percentage of pickup, but we still are without the benefit of those salary increases from the past to being factored into our current pay. I can always, the public often will vote to increase safety funding and safety benefits, but I can't imagine a situation where the public would go to increase pension benefits for general government employees, especially in the current climate. This will give the board the power to take away benefits, but it doesn't give them the power to give benefits without going to the voters. While I understand that is the position of this ordinance, the voters, this is a representative democracy, where the voters elected you to be their representatives. You have the best understanding in the full scope of all these contract negotiations when you go into it. Putting it before the border is an abdication of something that the board and the unions and the people, I'm sorry, that the people and the unions have trusted you to do. We've had a very good working relationship with the board in the past, and I don't want something like this to instill a sense of distrust between the public and the supervisors, and the supervisors and the unions. I also think that the timing of this ordinance is suspect. We only have three days to consider this before we can put it on the ballot. And it also is coming at a time after the terrible scandals are coming out of Bell. No one is getting rich off of the pensions in Ventura County. I think that if we go forward with an ordinance like this, especially in the climate that we're facing this year, with the public sentiment, we're going to have a reactionary vote rather than an informed vote. And I would just ask that the board consider the trust that the public has, as is evidenced by the fact that two incumbents were just re-elected. I believe that the board has been a good steward of the taxpayers in the past, and I believe that there will be in the future. And even though we can't guarantee who will be elected in the future, that will still be the people electing that person to represent their interest, not to go to the ballot box and then have to figure out and define and decide on labor contracts that they haven't been involved in negotiating. I thank you for the opportunity to address you. I thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Marina Porche? Or Porche? Sorry. Porche. Okay.
Good morning. I'm speaking for myself as a private individual. I am an employee covered by the management resolution. I reviewed very carefully Supervisor Foyes' board letter, and the growth of three hundred and twenty-seven percent over a decade period is a shocking number, but I haven't heard anyone say this morning that if this ordinance had passed before that decade happened, that any of that percent would have been avoided. And I'm given to understand that the last time there was a hiking of a benefit formula in this county was around nineteen sixty-six, where there was a small increase for... There was an increase for safety members. So for the past forty-three years, the board has been, and various boards through time, have governed themselves with discipline and accountability and responsibility and have, you know, earned the trust of the voters. I don't believe that this is a solution to a problem that exists, but I worry that it fools the voters because when this is presented to them, they're going to think they're attacking the growth in pensions, and it's not going to do that. It's a false promise. I also worry that this masks maybe a problem that needs more attention, and I'm sure that everyone's diligent so far in reviewing the costs in pension contributions, and there's been in the last year, you know, a bending of the cost curve through real reform, but there can be further opportunities for real reform. And so I want people studying, you know, why it hasn't grown three hundred and twenty-seven percent? What were the real drivers? And maybe one of the real drivers really is the size of the government workforce, and that's going to be a trade-off. You get services, but then there's a cost. And I think that's where I want my board's attention focused. Do we have the right-sized government? And that's the kind of review that I think engenders more efficiency in government. So I think this is something where, if it gets passed, we're fibbing to ourselves. And I don't know if any of you had kids where you watched them try to do their homework in front of the TV, and they're fibbing to themselves that they're accomplishing something real. And I think if this gets passed, we're fibbing to ourselves that we're really bending the cost curve. We're not. And so I would ask that the county not look to San Francisco as a beacon or to San Diego or to Orange County as a beacon. We are the beacon. We set the model, and we don't need solutions for other dysfunctional local entities applied here. We don't need it. And even though Supervisor Foy was quite complimentary of our board, and he didn't bash the board when he presented this issue, I see this as being perceived by the voters as a measure that will bash the board and bash county administration, and you don't deserve to be bashed. And if I was a member of the board, I wouldn't want to put something on a ballot that will create the perception that I deserve to be bashed. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you speaking up. Steve Silver?
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Stephen Silver. I'm an attorney who's here today representing the Ventura County Deputy Sheriff's Association. My firm also represents other recognized employee organizations and employees in this county, and there's so much to say and so little time to say it, so I'm just going to focus on the legal issues, which is what my clients wanted me to do. I think that there are serious... First of all, I just saw this yesterday, so I haven't conducted as thorough a job of researching it as I would like, but I think that there are serious, both substantive and procedural issues that will be faced, and if I'm correct, you're going to be spending an awful lot of money defending lawsuits where you're probably going to lose. You're probably going to have to pay the attorney's fees for people like me, and that certainly is not something you want to incur during this economic situation. The substantive issue is very simple. Under state law right now, the obligation to approve labor agreements that affect wages, hours, and working conditions is expressly placed upon you in Section thirty-five oh five point one of the California Government Code. You can't delegate this to the voters. And unlike Orange County, which is a charter county, you are a general law county who has to comply with the general laws of the state of California. Moreover, even if you were a charter county, you could not accomplish what your... What this ballot proposition would appear to achieve without first going through the negotiations process mandated by the legislature. This was tried before in a charter city involving, actually, the city of Seal Beach, and it was a case decided twenty-six years ago by the California Supreme Court, which I actually was involved in. And the court held that even a charter city could not adopt a ballot proposition that impacted the wages, hours, and working conditions of employees without first exhausting thoroughly the negotiations process mandated by state law, including all impasse procedures. Here, you have not attempted to pursue that process, and certainly for the Sheriff's Association and for most of my other clients, because of long-term contracts that were recently negotiated, you probably... You've waived your right to initiate that process for several years. So I think that you've got some serious procedural issues to deal with, even if you could get beyond the substantive issues. But, you know, there's been some talk about what this ordinance would achieve. Well, I've read the ordinance, and, first of all, it's very poorly written, but I guess if you modeled it after Orange County, I shouldn't be surprised. But the way I read it, somebody could certainly make a strong argument that if you afforded one dollar extra to any of your employees for health insurance benefits or cafeteria plan benefits, you couldn't do that without taking it to the voters because that one dollar, because health insurance contributions are part of what's pensionable income, you would have to... You would effectively be increasing their pensions by doing that, and you'd have to take it to the voters. So I think that before anybody takes any precipitous action, because this seems like clearly... I mean, it's been said already several times, but this is clearly a knee-jerk reaction to further somebody's political ambitions based on taking advantage of what's going on in other cities. I find it interesting that, for all the information that the county executive officer provided, that if anything, I mean, the employee should be up here, you know, pushing improved pension benefits just to maintain parity with the workforce, not to mention the recruitment and retention problems that this county would have. But I do believe that this is very poorly written. I think it's full of legal problems, and I think that I concur with Chris Mann that you certainly should... Well, one, you should just forget about this because it's... It makes no sense whatsoever to anybody. It's going to be costly to the taxpayers, and it's going to make you people look pretty silly. But even if you still are determined to go ahead and accomplish whatever political goals you want to accomplish, I suggest that you take some time and really examine both the contents and the legal implications. I mean, it just seems to me, I know it's been said before already, but if you're really serious about this, I think you ought to get up and leave right now because you're not doing your job. What you're basically saying is, I was elected to represent the people of this county, and I don't want to do that anymore. I want to make sure that I get approval from my constituency before I make any kind of important decision. If that's the way you feel, you ought to get up and leave. Thank you.
Okay. That... Thank you. No further cards submitted. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak on this item? All right, then we'll close that opportunity and bring it to the board for discussion. Supervisor Parks has questions?
I just have a couple of questions before I talk about comments or anything. One... I did have one question related to what Mr. Silver asked, and that is if increases to health insurance or health compensation would be considered total compensation and therefore require a vote of the people. And I don't know if the attorney... Our attorney can answer that. Is our health plan associated with our total compensation?
Our flex credits that we have are rolled into total compensation for calculating pension benefits. So any increase in the flex credits, which is what is used to pay for health insurance, would also increase the compensation earnable, which is part of the retirement calculation.
And another question I had was, this seems to call for specific actions by the retirement board, and I'm wondering if that is something that can be passed on to the voters. For example, can the voters tell the CERA to do an actuarial study? Can the voters also affect the additional benefits that the CERA passes on? Do you know that?
Well, I think it's questionable whether the ordinance can compel the CERA to do an audit. As a practical matter, the county would be asking the CERA to do the audit, and if they didn't do it, the county would have to prepare its own audit.
But this is not asking the county. It's having the voters tell the CERA, as I read. Am I right?
Right, but it's the same thing when the county puts a measure on for... It will be a County of Ventura ordinance. It will just be adopted by the voters, but it will have the same power as if the board adopted an ordinance.
So I have found in the past there are certain times when the CERA does things that we have absolutely no say on, so I'm wondering if that impacts that relationship because, you know, if we have some say on it, I think we certainly would have not done some of the things they have done.
Well, that one particular clause, which is paragraph B, I think it is questionable whether the CERA would have to abide by that. But the rest of it, the establishment of the pension formula is clearly something the board of supervisors has power to do. But there's one paragraph about the audit. I'm not sure if that's enforceable.
But what I'm... I agree regarding that one, but on paragraph C, where it states that the board of supervisors shall have no authority to enter into final binding agreements with any bargaining unit regarding retirement system benefit increases until... So at times, it's the retirement board that increases benefits. Is that right?
No, I don't think that's right. You know, the board of supervisors controls totally the establishment of the formula, and that chart we saw with the different county formulas, a lot of those are optional formulas the county board could choose. So the board, as a governing body for the county, establishes the formula. What the CERA has done over the years is pass certain resolutions that define what is included in comp earnable, for example. So certain kinds of benefits are included in this total compensation, and the practice has been sort of dual resolutions. The board of supervisors has approved it, and so has the CERA. But the CERA can't increase the Bennett formula, and today, everything that's in total comp... Well, I won't say everything. Almost everything is driven by statute and case law.
And I know when there was excess benefits, excess earnings, rather, the CERA supported additional benefits. And so I guess it's a two-pronged approach, you know? They need to make a decision. The board needs to make a decision, and I'm just wondering how this ordinance, which says what the board has to do, how it also reflects what the CERA has to do, and if we can have the voters tell the CERA what to do, or if we have to revisit the system that grants the compensation.
Well, there's no doubt that the board... This board can set the pension benefits. And there are a few items. I think when there were excess earnings, one issue was the CERA has some ability, but that was subject to litigation also, to award certain extra benefits. Yeah, which is a stipend for health care, for example, where they had excess earnings, but that's not the core benefit.
They can award some supplemental benefits?
Well, that was... That's a problem. You know, I think there has not been occasion, to my knowledge, where the county and the CERA has not agreed on those.
I know, but...
Well, they can't...
That's beside the point, whether we agree, but just whether they can implement it on their own.
No, they can't just give away money from the retirement system for extra benefits. The board of supervisors controls that.
Okay. And the issue with the extra earnings where additional benefits were awarded by the CERA and not by the board of supervisors?
I don't remember any extra benefits being awarded by the CERA that the board didn't approve.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I believe, you know, in the voters of Ventura County, I think it's... The voters of Ventura County have the final approval on what occurs in county government, and I believe that our voters are very intelligent individuals. They are the individuals that got us elected to the board of supervisors, and they elected us to represent, to represent them in policy matters such as pensions, salaries, and county services. So I believe at this time that this ordinance that's being put for a vote today, it's an ordinance that we have just a few hours, a couple of days before we meet a deadline, and I don't think that's fair to the public and to our employees. And I have some questions and concerns, but before I do that, I do want to thank the board of supervisors. I want to thank the CEO, and I want to thank the HR individuals that work for us, our staff, our executive committees that have worked so hard to put those budgets together, to work so hard to get our pensions in line. So I have some questions that I think are important, and they probably were answered by some of our speakers. For example, has this ordinance been reviewed by other elected officials that we have in the county? Has it been reviewed by our public safety individuals? I believe it's extremely important that they also review this. Public safety is really important to me, and I believe that implications... That we're going to have major implications with public safety if we continue with this. Has the county council looked at this measure? Are we legally okay? What effect is it going to have on MOUs that we have with our employees now? I'm very, very concerned also, as mentioned before, with the language that is proposed. I believe we're going to have lengthily expensive litigation if we continue with this effort. And also, I understand there's other agencies and cities that have recently agreed to similar proposals that are now currently in litigation. Other concerns that I have is that we're being compared to Orange County. Orange County, as you know, went bankrupt a while back. We're also... This has been concerned with... Compared with San Diego, who had bankruptcy and financial problems. I think that the County of Ventura has done an excellent and conservative job for our people. Have we looked at other counties that are doing a good job, other counties that have worked on their pensions, other counties that have an excellence in their pension programs? The other question that I have, what message are we sending our employees? Our human resources team has worked very successfully with our employee groups. They've given up three percent, three percent of their retirement, and in essence, it's a three percent cut. And I think that our employees have done an excellent job and tried to help us to solve the retirement fund problems. And also, in addition to that, they also pay additional dollars into the retirement system. It's not given to the employees. They pay a portion, a good portion of their retirement money. And as I mentioned before, the majority of our employees are employees that are not earning two hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand. They're probably in the thirty-eight thousand bracket, you know, that ultimately are going to retire maybe eighteen hundred or fifteen hundred dollars a month, and by the time you subtract insurance and by the time you subtract taxes, whether federal or state, they're going to have a minimal amount of dollars to work with. Also, our public safety employees, our firefighters, just recently opened up a contract, a contract that was not due for another year and plus, to help us with the pension fund. Our police officers, our deputies have done the same. In that sense, we have started a process of pension reform with our employees, and they're helping us out. I think, you know, that this ballot poses major problems, you know, for our county, and I believe that we need more time to... And I believe that we need more time to study that, if we're going to continue with this at all. Just last week, we were studying the initial study assessment guidelines, the guidelines that our ag people were concerned with, our farmers are concerned with, and we gave them a six-month extension to, to look at that. We're looking at the grading ordinance, and we're giving those people additional time to look at that. We are, I, I also believe, I also believe that our employees and, and our other elected officials and the public, especially the public, should be given an opportunity to look this over, instead of having this done immediately within hours of, of a deadline before this ballot is, is put on, on the ballot. So I think also that we got elected here to make that, those policies for our people, and the people have entrusted us in, in, with the pensions, with the salaries. And I don't think we ought to be making policy for the supervisors in the future either. This is our responsibility now, at the current time, in that we should take care of our employees, take care of the pensions, and especially the public. They trusted us to, 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 to support them and to make policy on their behalf. And, and I have a lot of concerns at this time with this, with this measure, and I don't think I can support it. Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions at this time?
Just kept comments on.
The question also was raised about whether you may have to negotiate with the unions. Do you know if that, do you think that is the case?
I think that's a matter of debate that's being litigated right now, and I wouldn't render an opinion on how that would come out in court.
Let me just ask a couple of quick questions, and then we'll get to, because it has been raised that this is, there is currently litigation, and in fact, there was a complaint filed June 23rd by the city, against the city of Menlo Park, from their labor tables. And it does raise the question of the, whether or not this would exceed the local initiative power, and that by the, and I'm reading briefly, and haven't even shown this to county council, and anything can be litigated, but I think that this board, historically, and has been said, that this board historically has held, held a strong line, and in fact, we fought some of our own litigation regarding the powers of this board as granted by the Constitution. In addition to those budgetary responsibilities granted by the Constitution, the comment that this also, one, may exceed the local initiative power, but also may, may subvert the collective bargaining process that is mandated by the Myers-Millis-Brown Act, and that it also may, this, this one piece of litigation that's been filed, that it may also be in conflict with the responsibilities that are mandated to the Board of Supervisors and elected leaders in the cities by the state constitution to not only just bargain in good faith, but also to, to retain the responsibilities to set, to set employee benefit and wages and working conditions under the leadership of the elected board members and/or cities. So I, I know that county council hasn't had a chance to see this. My, my comment is to Orange County and San Diego, Orange County, one is too, too, too late to hold itself up as a gold standard. San Diego gave benefits to an entire workforce that, that in addition to, and I firmly support the comments made this morning, that some of what we're seeing now is a front-page issue as a result of return on investments and, and conditions that took place in the late 90s, that really has, has caused this, and rightfully so, the taxpayers' concern with this, and the long-term responsibility of, of the taxpayers, who certainly are the ones who pay the, pay the bill. But I think that I would question the abdication of responsibility, and, and not having county council had a chance to give this board a full review of that, and, and be able to give us some good guidance as to how this action may take us down either path of litigation or certainly abdicating that responsibility. That's just a question I had, and it's not looking for an answer, just, just, I'm sure, looking to say that there, those questions have been raised.
Other questions?
Well, I appreciate the comments from the public. I think there's been a lot of misrepresentations, pretty clear on some of this. The key to this whole thing is the benefit formula. That's it. You saw it like 1.9, 1, 2.0, that's all we're talking about. We're not talking, because it says right here, with retirement exception of established, statutory established cost of living adjustments, salary increases, all, all those things are normal stuff that goes on in a normal process. So what we're talking about is just the ability in this for the public to say, yes, we agree. There's one person who made this whole thing, we have to go through all these levels of approval, and I think approval to do this, and I think that's 100% wrong. We know it's wrong, because even county council said, there's a whole bunch of established ones out there, three at 50. If we decided to go three at 45, yes, we would have to go through all these different established things, all the way through legislature, you'd have to come up with a whole new benefit plan. Well, there's a whole bunch of increased benefit plans that are already out there that we would not have to go through, any of those things are already established, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. We wouldn't have to go through any of that stuff. So that, that kind of a thing is, again, misinformation. But again, they all talked about benefits, this, we're not talking about any of that. We have been, done a good job here in this county. All I'm saying is, we know that benefits levels, the level of the benefit, not the salaries, not all that stuff, has an impact on this, on the, the, the cost of what our, 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 our benefit plan is. If we were at three at 50, I heard our CEO say to us that we'd be spending how much more the other day?
On two issues. One was the, one was the, the expansion of cola and of 3% at 50. Our finance department has calculated to be about $40 million.
$40 million. So we would have been, if this board would approve, it would cost us $40 million. And how much did we have to make adjustments to come up with 15 or 20 million? We could imagine what that was. So from that standpoint, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about that formula. We're not talking about any other thing here. Nobody's, oh, I can't get a raise if my, all of a sudden I, I had a dollar more go towards, go towards paying for my benefits. Totally incorrect. That's not what we're talking about, because those are already part of this whole thing. And so...
You know, what gets me though, is that it may have unintended consequences. If you just said it's just that percentage increase at 50 at 65, that would be a different story. What you have in here has a lot of other things involved in it than just that. And they're saying, for example, your health plan is something that would be considered part of your total compensation.
So is your salary, though.
And the way it's written.
Did you read here? Except those things.
Yeah, but it doesn't say, it doesn't say except for health plan.
Okay, okay, then maybe what it's, okay, let's just get more clear. Maybe it should just say 100% of only is going to be, what I wanted to put, let me see, it's just the formula. What I wanted to put in there, so people didn't have this fear of, well, if I get a salary increase, if I get, that's why we put those detail in there. We're not talking about that. We're only talking about that 1%, you know, okay, is that? And the idea, also, somebody asked about the audit. What this is asking the retirement board to do is to put out to the public, what is the cost of this 1% statutory increase? So the public knows what that is, because it may go to the public and say, this is what we believe is worthwhile, that we agree with the supervisors, that the labor unions come together for that. We agree that that is right, the right thing to do in board of companies. Remember, San Francisco's done this, San Francisco's done this with, I don't know how many 60 votes or some number of votes, and, and remember, it's a bit about little over 50% have not passed, and under 50% have passed increases in these things, for exact reason. They saw the reason. And the reason for that is that we, as a supervisor board, would come out and say, this is the right thing for these. We made some adjustments here in wages, in, in, in wages to the sheriff's department a few years ago, didn't we? We came out and said it was the right thing to do, we couldn't recruit, we couldn't retain, we had to do that. We went to the sheriff's department, we said, yes, we want, we believe this is the right thing to do. And, and we did, we increased. Sure, you know, we increased those because that was the right thing to do. All I'm saying here is, there will be times when if these pensions or whatever, you know, the pension levels may be at a point, it's the right thing to do. We are at the lower end, as Mr. Silman said, there's no question, we're at the lower end. And I think that there may be a time that that may be, I'm not sure if that'll ever happen. We, as the board, in our current board passports, have said, not for, somebody came up with 30 years, the woman that was up here, that's true. But all I'm saying is that we know that the impact of, as the CEO said, three at 50 and some of those other things, would have had a $40 million increase to us annually, annually. Those, that's a critical piece, that we would have to make the argument to the public that that is worth us doing, and we see the benefit. That's all this is. That's straight, it doesn't affect anybody's salary, it doesn't affect anything else going forward. That's all it affects, is what you'd say.
I would say that's what you want it to only affect, but I don't think the wording of this does that.
Okay, well, I, we, well, okay, I, I understand what you said. We tried to leave, put as much in to say, to get away from the idea that somebody would think, because I had somebody come to me and say, what was my salary now, now I can't get an increase out of the public? No. That's why we put some of it in. Otherwise, we just would have wrote. The other side, and people say, what about all the other things? That's why we put that in.
But, but sure, two seconds, but I think it's very ambiguous, you know, the formula that you're putting together, and, and we have not increased the percentage in years, you know, so I don't see why we're panicking now at the last minute.
We're not, we're, I'll give you that more closely.
I'd like to just, one comment, and then Supervisor Bennett has to speak, that one of the issues for, I, I think one of the intents of putting something of this forward is to assure the taxpayers and the public that, that the, their dollars are being handled wisely and efficiently, and, and understanding who's paying the bill. And I think that the transparency issue of, of the public being assured that, unlike some city not to be named, that there's transparency in everything that impacts the taxpayer and the taxpayer's pocketbook. And I'll say to you, the next, the addendum item that we have on our agenda today, item 37, and prior ones, anytime we bring forward an MO, an MOA agreement with our labor tables, we have in that document, in a transparent document, comes fully to the board, it's posted, et cetera, that it addresses that agreement with that labor table, that addresses the status of the retirement system, and whether the proposed change to the labor tables agreement will have an impact or not on the pension funds. In fact, it says that, under government code, requires that the county give written notice of any salary and benefit changes, including an explanation of the financial impact of the change on the funding of the county's retirement system. So I, I, you know, if it's transparency, again, the practice has been, the culture has been transparency on these things in this county. And I don't like to be, I don't like to be considered at the lowest common denominator of a Bell or an Orange County, or those other folks who've gone before and have, have, have abdicated their responsibility. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. You know, when I first read this, my reaction was, it's just very irrelevant at this time, because there's just no chance that this Board of Supervisors is going to be voting for pension increases. And I just don't see that, that happening in the future. I think the climate has changed dramatically in this county and this country about pension increases. So I didn't, I just went, you know, then I read the board letter again, and, and I have to tell you, after I read the board letter, I went, ah, I'm, I'm more concerned with the implications that are in this board letter. And today, your comments have been more expansive about recognizing that the board has done some things, and the unions have done some things, but none of that's in this board letter that is the public document that, that went out there with this. And then I was thinking, and it was pointed out today, I mean, in 2001, when I came into office, it was right after that huge 1990s run-up, all right, right at a time when it was very easy to say, there's plenty of money, we were overfunded, we were over 100%, there's plenty of money. And, and the board did not give pension benefit increases, even in that environment. So your argument that, well, this makes the case because we're low, we were low then, we were at the bottom then, and we didn't make the increases when we had all of that generous money. So as I got frustrated with the letter, I did something to relieve my frustration, but, and Supervisor Floyd, I know you'll really enjoy it, I created your favorite object, which is a Steve Bennett PowerPoint, all right? So, so I, I'd like to put these up here, please, if, if you could, to try to summarize my thoughts, and I, I certainly will be briefer by doing it this way. In Orange County and San Diego, scandal or bankruptcy eroded the public confidence in the board regarding pensions, right? They're different, they're charter counties, it was done differently. Next slide, please, right? The timing of this proposal, I just think is way off. You, you see it here, and you see it in, we have very challenging economic times. We may benefit from further cooperation from our unions regarding pension reductions, right? I think that this, having this now will make it more difficult to get the unions to even consider cooperating with us on pension reductions. It doesn't mean that we couldn't unilaterally do things, but we're far better off cooperating and, and earning that cooperation as, as we talk about these issues. The motion in Mr. Floyd's board letter, ignore the fact that this board has no intention of granting increases on pension benefits. I think that the average citizen who sees this and knows about this thinks, oh, the board's putting this on because there's some imminent pension increases that the board is thinking of doing. Next slide, please, right? In this environment, the proposal is simply counterproductive to negotiating future reduction in pension benefits, if in fact, the economy turns worse and we're in even worse shape. We hope that's not going to be the case. We hope things like the pension turn around, and we're going to be all right, and, and we'll be able to keep things level. If you'll hold, if you'll not get ahead of me, I appreciate it up there. So, but it, but it is counterproductive to any possibility if we do need to do that, and that's the environment that we're in at this point in time. The motion in the board letter, ignore the fact that this board has led local governments in asking employees to pay a greater share of their contributions. We were the ones that were out there and making the case that we had to get this, this, this pullback, and we were leaders locally in terms of doing that. And again, the board letter doesn't recognize that, and, and this motion, it doesn't recognize that at all. Next slide, please. It ignores the fact that the unions have then stepped forward voluntarily, some of them reopening FIRE and, and the deputy sheriffs, reopening their contracts when they didn't have to, to voluntarily work with us and come up with a permanent increase in their contributions to the pension fund, a decrease to the liabilities for the taxpayers. Next slide, please. The board letter doesn't explain why this item's brought forward for last-minute adoption. It was said in the newspaper, been considering it for the whole year. Here we are, three days before we have to make a final decision, and we have this last-minute adoption, not explained here. Next slide, please. The board letter implies the board's been granting pension increases, and we have, I think, real clear evidence from the CEO that, that we have not, but it implies, starting off with this first paragraph that uses 1999, and then saying, you know, it was 32 million then, and, and, I mean, you can always pick these, these years when you have these fluctuations and make it look like these increases are a result of pension increases. They're not the result of pension increases. If we'd had this thing in place 10 years ago, we'd still have the exact same pension liabilities out there that we have at this point in time. Next slide, please. The motion ignores the important and tough political stand that this board has taken on pension increases for the last decade. And I want to point out that it probably does partially because, next slide, please, because those were taken before Supervisor Floyd was, has got here, and I just, I just don't, I just am concerned about the impression being that we have one pension fighter on the board, or one person out there protecting the taxpayer. Next slide, please. It ignores the fact that Ventura County was the first local government, and, and I know our deputy sheriffs and our firefighters, you know, were, felt strongly about it, but, but they will attest to it, we were the first local government to strongly oppose three at 50, and that was in spite of the support, we even had the Ventura County Taxpayers Association stand up here and tell us that we ought to give three at 50, and we had the, we had our own sheriff doing it. Now, that, you talk about intense political times, so when Mr. Floyd makes the case that, you know, in the future, we won't be able to stand up to this pressure when, because we're at the bottom, and when things get better, we stood up to it when we had surplus money in the retirement fund, we had the taxpayer, we had all the cover you could possibly ask for, the Taxpayers Association, the sheriff, all those people in favor of it, and we said no at that point in time. So I don't think there's some rush that the public's at imminent risk of this Board of Supervisors developing a wild hair and going off and granting pension increases. In fact, we're in a different mode. We're in, we're reconsidering the pensions that we are. Next slide, please. The motion requests that the board place the item in front of the voters, and the motion asks us to only authorize Supervisor Floyd to write the ballot comments, right? As, as board's authority, everybody does that, but only Supervisor Floyd write the ballot comments. Next slide, please. It's clear how Mr. Floyd... "It's clear how Mr. Floyd benefits politically from this motion. It's not clear to me how the public benefits from a rush to action, given this board's long and strong opposition to pension increases at this point in time." Next slide. And so my motion, there's three parts to it. My motion, one, the Board of Supervisors has no intention, and we just reaffirm, the Board of Supervisors has no intention of increasing pension benefits for any employees at this time. Two, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors not opposed to the concept of voters voting on pension increases, right, that overall concept, we're not opposed to it. But, three, a board discussion of this proposal should take place after appropriate public dialogue and after we pass the period where we're only considering the possibility of pension reductions. That's sometime way down in the future, I think. But it is just counterproductive to be talking to our unions about where we may have to go because of budget problems, and at the same time be floating proposals like this. There's just too much of a disconnect. So that's the motion. Those three proposals are part of my motion that I'd like to make instead of us considering Supervisor Floyd's motion on this. So, Madam Chair, that's the motion I'd like to make.
Okay, he's put a motion on the table for discussion. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
There is a second. Now there's discussion.
I appreciate your PowerPoint. That's one of your longer ones. Again, I think you're missing the point of what we're doing. I did not in any way say we've increased pensions at all. I said the cost of pensions, our pension, gone up, there's no question. And a lot of those things are based on financials, salary increases, all that, there's no question about that. All we're dealing with here, again, is, and the public has been benefited from a board over the years and CEOs who have been very good about this. And you make a great point, during a time when the contributions to the pension plan were low, pension was funded, this board stood firm. The future boards, and we were on there, and I think Supervisor Long was there, they stood firm. I'm not saying anything against that. All I'm saying is that we need to ensure that there's been a lot of other boards throughout the counties, I mean, throughout the state, that have stood firm during certain times and have moved. And at the same time, this is a public debt to the taxpayer, that they are the ones who suffer that penalty. They do. We suffer now with less sheriffs on the street, less DAs to prosecute, less people to do that. That is something that they pay for. They pay in that way. And at some point, if the cost gets out of hand and if we end up, as our CEO said, the lost decade, if that happens again, where will we be? Now, this is not going to change any of that, true, but it does give people the confidence that we're insured that if something does change or some board decides to do that, that they will have a say in that. Because you know, how many people come out here compared to the 850,000 people who live in this county? Very few. And those things happen, and it's happened under the eye of, you know, whatever, look what's, like I said, what's happened to Bell. Bell has nothing to do with us. We do not have any of that situation going on in our county. We have been very open to make sure those kind of things. Matter of fact, this county, when you talk about the high level of pay that are, I mean, the level of pay that our high-level people in the sense that leadership get is probably 20 to 25% under what the average is out there. We are not a high end. We've done a tremendous job with that. Again, nobody's saying any of that. All we're saying here is that the confidence to the people that if those things do change and a different board shows up here, different things come up, that's part of it. I think that's where they will have that opportunity. That's clearly all this was, very clear. And the reason that, you know, we're looking at this now is that there's some other situations that came up that held this off for a while at the request of some people that we would hold this off. But this is only a situation here to go to the voters to say, if these things increase, you will have a say to say, because that is your debt, that you will pay. Nobody out here will pay. We will, I will not bear the consequences, you will not bear the consequences. I will bear the consequence if I raise their salaries by 50%. The public will say, you're out of office. No question about that. But I can say something else here that the public never sees for years and years and years, because the people who did vote for whatever we have currently 20 years ago, 30 years ago, whatever it is, now that's coming to fruition, and we're glad. Everybody's paying that across the board, in this state and every other state. So, again, that is what this is all about. There's been a lot of accusations about a lot of things, but it's very clear that's it.
Supervisor Floyd, you just said that the reason this is coming up now at the last minute is because some people asked this to be held off. Who is it that asked for this to be held off?
I, I'd rather tell you that personally, and then you can make a decision to bring that up yourself.
Madam Chair, I'd like, the reason I second this motion, because I, as I mentioned before, I believe in the voters. I believe that the voters of Ventura County are very intelligent individuals, and I believe that they voted us to represent them in policy matters such as pensions and such as other county services. So I think it's important that we continue that effort. And also, I see a lot of legal problems with this measure, so I think that, that's why I'd like to second this motion, because I believe that our employees are helping us out, help the public to reduce costs and also to reduce the pension concerns that we have.
Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. My concern really with this is the fact that I think, I'm concerned with the unintended consequences. We heard one attorney tell us that it was poorly written, that we need to negotiate with the unions. Our own county council said you may have to do that, that's up in the air. Our county council told us section B is probably not something that we can force Vassera to do anything by having the voters tell Vassera what to do. So that gives me pretty much validation that there are parts of this which are not going to fly. And that, if what you are looking for is to lock in the formula, that's something that I would support. But this clearly is also having the effect of including health benefits, because you didn't explicitly accept health benefits in this. When we go ahead and, you know, even change healthcare companies or employees, you know, choose to, you know, put more into their healthcare plan and we can then increase the benefits, if that also affects total compensation, that's the concern. So I think what needs to happen, you know, and when this comes back, if it comes back, we need to be more clear, and I think right now, this thing is not going to fly. And we put something on the ballot, you know, and it locks in things that are unintended consequences. What happened in Bell, the reason that they were able to give themselves enormous salary increases is because they had one item on the ballot, and that item said that it would give the city more local control and people voted for it, but it immediately led to their ability to increase their salaries. I have that same concern of what can happen if this gets approved by the voters? And what I'm hearing is that it could lead to, obviously, to litigation because of we're requiring things in this that are not legally allowed to be required. I think also that if employees, for example, employees pay more into their own pensions that they want to have, if it's all paid for by the employees, it would still be an increase in pensions. So what my concern is, when, when we come back with this, to make sure that you lock in what it is that we want, and telling Vassera what they have to do, including health benefits, when you don't mean them to be included, those things, I think, need to be taken out of this so that we don't end up in something that will put us into a lawsuit. And if it is a lawsuit, one that at least our county council can say, well, you know, defend. Right now, we're not getting that defense. We're hearing that there are items in here that don't fly, so. Yeah, I would like to be able to support something like that going on the ballot, but as written, I don't think I can. And I also have to agree with Supervisor Bennett that to have you personally write the ballot arguments without our board being able to have input on that, I don't think that is something that would fly either. You want to put something on the ballot, you get the board's support. I think the board should also be supportive of what that ballot argument's going to be, because it is coming from the board. So I really do think we need more time to analyze this. From the analysis I've given it, I'm finding that there are flaws, so I'm hoping that in the future you can come back with something that is, something that is more legally justifiable, and that won't get us into litigation, and something that doesn't do more than what it is that you're intending. I think what you're doing, what you want it to do is one thing, what it does do is something else.
Supervisor Bennett.
I just want to say one final thing. I hope we can vote on this, because I know we've got people that came for our 10 o'clock item, and that is, I just keep getting this disconnect. Supervisor Floyd, when you made your comments, you said, "What if we have another lost decade?" And I sit there and say, "If we have another lost decade, we're not going to be increasing pension benefits." So it just doesn't...
I hear, I guess what you're...
Yeah, it just doesn't add up.
I was talking about the cost of pensions.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
But I'm ready to vote, Madam Chair.
Anyway, so we have, we have something on here. I know there, I don't know if it's a substitute motion or we have a motion. We can vote on this, that was, we're up on number 30, whatever this is, 33. Right?
Right, there's a motion, there's a motion that's been put forward by Supervisor Bennett, it's the only motion that's been put forward at this time, and it's been seconded by Mr. Zaragoza.
But it's not a motion on this issue?
No. Well, it's a motion on this issue, but it's a motion...
It is a motion on this issue.
Yes, that's right. Because you brought a board letter forward, Supervisor, but there's not a motion on the table for adoption of those recommended actions. There's a motion as proposed by Supervisor Bennett.
Could you put the slide back up that is the motion?
Sure, if they can run through that, I can also read it to you.
Oh, yeah, if you can read it, that would work, too.
Certainly, all right. So the motion was, "The Board of Supervisors has no intention of increasing pension benefits for any employees at this time. The Ventura County Board of Supervisors is not opposed to the concept of voters voting on pension increases. A board discussion of this proposal should take place after appropriate public dialogue and after we pass the period where we're only considering the possibility of pension reductions."
All right, there's a motion and a second on that, and I know we had apologies to our 10 o'clock folks. You know, as a supervisor who was under significant fire in an election that dealt with a proposed benefit increase that was, would have made a difference, I, I think you can't trust the voters to vote for, for us who set this dais, who have to understand and work through the complexities of negotiations and workforce benefits, and then not trust that the same, that the voters would not trust that we can't work through the same complexities of the total package of benefits. And you made a statement about saying that putting this to the voters, then they will trust. I think that is a, that they will trust that this board is going to act accordingly, and I think it's a false, I think it is a false promise, because I've received emails where, from folks in the last two days, who've said, "You need to do this because you need to deal with double dipping and you need to deal with spiked pension benefits. This does nothing to deal with that, nothing to deal with that." So it is complex. And I just, I still feel that there is legal challenges, there would be legal challenges. I think that abdicating our responsibility to an initiative process is what is just harmed this state immensely in a variety of public policy areas, so I'll support the motion. Shall we vote on the motion?
Please.
It's on the table. Please vote. Okay. And that passes. Four votes to one no. Does that conclude the discussion at this time? I think so. Thank you all who came to speak to this item, and I would hope that you trust, trust the voters. Our 10 o'clock, I'm so, apologies that we've run over on this. We do need to take a five-minute break. Our support staff here haven't had a break. We'll be right back to you. Okay, thank you. And we're going to move ahead now with our wonderful time. Certain items, wonderful, and their celebrations, various things. And item 20 is our first item up, and Supervisor Bennett is going to introduce and carry that one.
Thank you very much Supervisor Long. This is a presentation of resolution proclaiming August 2010 as Child Support Awareness Month. And I know we have one speaker, the Assistant Director, Deborah Fram, and if Deborah, if you would come on up. And then also in attendance here today, Stan Traum, the Director, Wilma Thomas, Fiscal Administrative Services Manager, Marcia Ellis Diaz, Administrative Officer, Rahi, I'm not going to pronounce this right.
Raji.
There you go, there you go. Do the last name too while you're at it.
Raji Bishnoi.
There we go, great. I'll take Ro Schwab, Ken Seewell, you can have the rest. And then the outreach team, Don Herzog, Yolanda Hernandez, and Carmen Flores. And this is a pleasure for us every time that we get to do this in the Board annually. And it is really important when you think of the number of children that are affected by the child support system here. So I'd like to read this resolution. It's not too long, and I think it very accurately captures the great work being done in Ventura County. Whereas this is the annual observance of Child Support Awareness Month, and it dates back to 1983 when Congress designated the month of August as National Child Support Enforcement Month. Child Support Awareness Month celebrates the key roles that parental, emotional, and financial support play in the well-being of our children, helping them to become healthy, productive, and well-adjusted adults. The County of Ventura is strongly committed to the health and welfare of all children who reside in this county, based on the premise that all children have a right to receive emotional and financial support from both parents. And the California's Child Support Program provides important services, enabling parents to be a positive influence in the lives of their children, benefiting all who live and work in California. County of Ventura is strongly committed to promoting the health and well-being of all children by ensuring that non-custodial parents pay child support on a regular and timely basis, while also encouraging both parents to have a caring and nurturing relationship with their children. County of Ventura Department of Child Support Services maintains an outstanding record for professional, yet compassionate customer service, as well as exceptional collection efforts. And the California State Department of Child Support Services is encouraging parents who have had a driver's or professional license suspended for failure to pay child support to reengage with the child support program and their children by participating in the Get Back on the Road Again campaign to have their suspended license restored. Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger has proclaimed that August is Child Support Awareness Month in the state of California, and child support is a chance for a brighter future. So therefore, it is a great pleasure for the Board of Supervisors to proclaim August 2010 as Child Support Awareness Month, and to congratulate the parents who place the health and welfare of children as a high priority and willingly provide their support. Thank you very much. Would you like to add any comments that you have for us, Deborah, about the group?
I thought you'd never ask, yes. Typically, we come forward and we give you all kinds of statistics, including the important one, that we are on target, despite today's economy, to collect over $51 million in child support this year. That would slightly exceed last year's collection, so that's a huge accomplishment. But today, the number we want to tell you about is 27,000. There are 27,000 children in our caseload. And while we could talk a few about the stats in our caseload, I think particularly for Child Support Awareness Month, it's the 27,000 kids that matter. I am joined today by a group, primarily our outreach folks. They represent over 200, nearly 220 of your employees that work on behalf of these 27,000 children. And we have been proactively carrying our message forward out into the community. We are, will be at the Oxnard Farmer's Market. On Thursdays, we have taped a number of public service announcements, both in Spanish and English, for the Spanish and English radio stations. In addition, we have joined with our counterparts in other Southern California child support departments. In being open, one Saturday in August, August 21st, from 8:00 to 1:00, we will have all of our top-quality staff, both Spanish and English-speaking, of course, available to work with the non-custodial parents who would like to talk with us about getting their licenses released. We have mailed slightly more than 1,300 postcards out to the community, to those non-custodial parents whose licenses, either driver's or professional licenses, have been suspended. And we are advertising our availability and increased accessibility to work with them to get those, them back on the road. This campaign, the Get Back on the Road campaign is huge. It's being carried out by the state in partnership with the Department of Motor Vehicles. They, our local offices throughout the county, have our postcards available for customers coming in, and the posters are posted as well. So I invite you to take a look at our display. Out in the lobby, you'll see the 27,000 children identified there as well. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. I think that's an excellent program to get folks, custodial parents, to be able to drive. In this county, particularly difficult to do. All right, thank you. Thank you so much, and those of you who attended, and all of your staff, and excellent performance out of our, out of the Child Support Division, and thank you, all the staff. Excellent performance. Okay, I'm going to ask our good friends of the credit union to be a little patient, because I think I want to move, I would like to move to our proclamation that recognizes World Breastfeeding Week, because I know we have babies here. So, if you might. So I would like to invite down, I will be introducing this resolution, and invite Patty McWaters as representative of the Breastfeeding Coalition of Ventura County to step forward. Patty will speak and address us and introduce the members for the awards that will be presented to Breastfeeding Friendly Awards for 2012. But first, I'm going to take the, a moment to pull some highlights out of this recognition, this resolution, that will declare August 1st through the 7th as World Breastfeeding Week. This is a week that is recognized by major medical organizations such as the American Academy of Pediatrics, American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, American Academy of Family Physicians, American Dietetic Association, National Association of WIC Directors, UNICEF, and WHO. And it's recognized such as it is a preferred method of infant feeding and to support this method in the early years of a young child's life. The Coalition here in Ventura County exists to support breastfeeding as a cultural norm for all babies and to promote maternal and child health through this education, support, and outreach into our county. All available knowledge indicates that human milk optimally enhances growth, development, and well-being of infants by providing the best possible nutrition, protection against specific infections and allergies, and the promotion of maternal and infant bonding. The families of Ventura County need reliable sources of information to, in order to make decisions when the young ones are arriving, and to do so with a great support system, which does exist with this coalition. This, all of this contributes to lowering our healthcare costs for infants. It's economical, it's environmentally friendly, and provides benefits at little or no cost and significant benefits. So in recognizing this, Breastfeeding Coalition of Ventura County and the La Leche League celebrates World Breastfeeding Week, August 1st through the 7th, proclaimed again by the World Alliance and the World Health Organization and UNICEF. So I'll step down to present this, and I know we're going to recognize those who have excelled in our county in this effort. And Patty, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Mr. Carroll. I know you like it when we come here because we give you a lot to look at. This is kind of a different view for you than what you normally see. A lot of young, happy, well, maybe impatient faces by this point this morning. As the Work-Life Coordinator for the County of Ventura, I'm privileged to serve as the Awards Co-Chair for the Breastfeeding Coalition. The Breastfeeding Coalition of Ventura County is a dedicated group of healthcare providers, community leaders, policymakers, and parents, as well as public and private organizations. We collectively promote and support exclusive breastfeeding for the first six months and continued breastfeeding beyond the first year. We build community partnerships, develop resources, provide advocacy, education, outreach, and support healthcare providers, legislators, families in the public. And we sponsor an annual awards program. It's the Breastfeeding Friendly Awards. The award categories include small and large businesses, nonprofit organization, licensed childcare providers, and physicians, which is the category we've recently added, that are all located within Ventura County. We recognize their efforts and the outstanding job they do to promote, advocate, and support breastfeeding. This year, we received over 20 nominations for the Breastfeeding Friendly Awards, and we're proud to have the five award winners here with us today. So on behalf of the Breastfeeding Coalition, we're honored to present the winners with a symbol of our appreciation. We have plaques for our winners. And we thank the Board for helping us to recognize the outstanding efforts of our award winners, because I know you have your certificates to present as well. So if I could have our five award winners come up to the front, and whoever you have with, come on and bring on up. And...
Babies.
Yes. Gotta bring the babies. Do you want me to, do you want me to announce the names? And who do you have first? We'll get everybody up. It kind of works to congregate over here. And we'll get photos, so there'll be a chance. Okay, who do you have first? Okay. This is our, for our, our small business, the award goes to Chick-fil-A, and they are the, it's the Oxnard franchise, and congratulations. I want to mention really quick regarding Chick-fil-A, the nomination that came in spoke to the fact that the employee that nominated them as the employer, she wasn't sure she wanted to breastfeed. And she said, "The owner openly talked to me about breastfeeding on several occasions and made it clear that blinds, oh blinds would be put up in my office if I chose to breastfeed." And they, they went about to change office space that... So she would have outlets and a locking door. So basically, made the accommodations to allow this employee to, to be able to breastfeed. So that's very... Okay, we'll do, our large business winner for this year is Baxter Bioscience. Baxter offers two private rooms with all the appropriate accommodations for breastfeeding, with four hospital-grade pumps for employees to use. Employees simply bring in their own attachments. Baxter makes it a priority to give ample time to pump throughout the day. Good for you. For our nonprofit, the winner was Community Memorial Hospital of Ventura. The nomination for CMH, the employee mentioned that she pumped at work for almost a year and continued to nurse my baby for two more, two more years. And with my second baby breastfeeding is just the beginning. I can't imagine long-term success will be anything but better. She also refers to the New Parent Resource Center at CMH, where moms can go for free to get help by pumps at a discount, and that she is so amazed at the responsiveness of her employer at CMH. In our childcare category, we have a Place to Grow Infant Center, which is in Ojai. The comment on the nomination for a Place to Grow says, "When I dropped my children off at daycare, the staff was nothing but cooperative to every breastfeeding need, truly dedicated to the good health of infants, and most compassionate to the needs of mothers, breastfeeding families, and their babies." Congratulations. And in our new category this year, which was physicians, we have Dr. Kevin White of Surfside Pediatrics, and accepting is for her...
Well, his wife's name is off.
Yay, okay, double roll. And I have to mention for, for Dr. White, we actually received seven nominations, just for, for Dr. White and his office. "Always take time to discuss breastfeeding with me. Include questions about my diet and how it affects my baby. He took time to make sure my employer was offering me the resources I needed to continue breastfeeding. Dr. White has certified lactation consultant on staff and frequently refers to her and other resources in Ventura County." So obviously doing a wonderful job in encouraging moms to start breastfeeding and supporting that. So, thank you. Not out of place.
Baby's up front.
Yeah, baby's up front. Can we scoot you over just a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody get a good smile.
Thank you. operator, is very active in Oxnard. Thank you for all your community support. Okay, Board members, that was, thank you for taking that a little out of order, and I appreciate the credit union. You've won some supporters there, I'm sure, letting the babies go first. So now, it is my pleasure to introduce this next item, and it is to recognize our very own Ventura County Credit Union, which is celebrating its 60th anniversary. And I will, I will do some of the history on this, but I'd like to invite up to receive... And I will do some of the history on this, but I'd like to invite up to receive the resolution Joe Schroeder, President and CEO of our Ventura County Credit Union. And then you can certainly introduce others who are here with you. And, okay, now I'll start with the resolution. The Ventura County Employees Credit Union was chartered on February 28, 1950 by 10 county employees who pooled their resources and operated under a stairwell in the county courthouse, that was the one on Poli, to serve the County of Ventura employees. Over the years, the institution became Ventura County Federal Credit Union and ultimately evolved to our Ventura County Credit Union today. Credit Unions are nonprofit cooperatives founded by people working together under the principle of people helping people. And they call for pooling of personal resources and leadership abilities for the good of the cooperative and create a regular habit of savings so those in need may borrow. The Ventura County Credit Union continues today to remain at the forefront of responsible lending and to provide our employees with financial literacy education in order to alleviate financial challenges. And for over 27 years, the Ventura County Credit Union has assisted the County of Ventura with a direct deposit program for the county employees. And the Ventura County Credit Union has created a credit card program for the County of Ventura to assist departments and employees with travel needs. And it has expanded its facilities throughout the county to conveniently serve all County of Ventura employees. So with this recognition, I'm very pleased and the Board to celebrate with you the 60th anniversary of the Credit Union and to recognize and honor the contributions that the Ventura County Credit Union has made throughout our county and the excellent benefits provided to our employees, and to certainly commend all of your staff. It's customer service friendly. Customers are very important, and for all of the services you've rendered over the years to our Ventura County. And I'll step down, Mr. Schroeder, and present this and invite you to say words and introduce any of those with you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm probably, even though I'm the President and CEO, I'm probably not the right person to be up here because it's my staff that really does it. I've been the CEO for less than a year, and I've got staff here that have been doing payroll for over 11 years. And Marilyn, where's Marilyn at? Come on, Marilyn. Marilyn's been walking payroll over for 11 years, and I think we calculated that in those 11 years, it was over $1.1 billion. And she told me she never got hit in the crossing walk. She dodged a lot of cars. She absolutely loves the employees over here, and they're not really... We view them as members of the Credit Union and owners of the Credit Union, and we have kind of a corny approach to it. So we know we got started 60 years ago underneath a stairwell. I don't know what that says about us, but today, we're a half a billion dollar organization. So I'd like to thank all 10 of those people for starting the Credit Union and everything that we're allowed to give back to people, financial literacy and being great members of the community. And I'm new to the county and to the city, and I just cannot figure out why more than 850,000 people don't live in this county. I have used to live in San Diego and in Orange County. And let me tell you, if I would have known about this sooner, you wouldn't have been able to kick me out of this county. I have absolutely fallen in love with this county and the city, and I love the Credit Union. And I have a tremendous Board of Directors, and I have staff here and information technology, the techies, the geeks, who we like to make fun of, but they are so valuable when it comes to payroll. And I have another employee up, we're stepping, who does the credit cards that we took over...
Credit cards?
Yeah, she does all the credit cards, and from what I understand, we don't charge the county for that. So it's just something we're supposed to do because you started us under that stairwell, and it's something that we return back to the county, so...
Who are your board members present?
I have two, three board members present. Monique. Monique works for the county.
Yeah.
Roxanne, let me see, Roxanne's mother was a county employee and currently works for...
Oskovic Farms.
Thank you.
Hey.
And Brenda was a longtime county employee and is now retired. And that's three of our wonderful board members that we have.
And please come up so we can take a picture.
Come on. And I have additional staff here, and again, I'm probably the last person that should be standing up here because it's my staff and the Board that really deserves the credit for this.
60th anniversary, come on. Important to do. A lot of presentation to you.
Yeah.
Anyone else wish to comment? Or anything? Okay. What's around here?
Come on, give him a hug.
Come on, I was in there. Okay, cool. Congratulations. Thank you all. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Where'd she go? Oh, there she is. To present a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the County of Ventura and the Honorable Christine El Cohen Auditor Controller. And as the Board Letter notes, this is an award that we have had the opportunity, this award has been received in the past 27 years. And what that says to me is that we continue to provide excellence in financial reporting, and we continue to improve that so that we hold our position to be honored year after year after year. It's a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to our county and specifically to recognize Christine Cohen and her leadership as the Auditor Controller. This is under the Government Finance Officers Association in the United States and Canada for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR. The certificate is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management team. So I get the honor of presenting this, 215 this year, and to recognize again the complete excellence of the entire department in providing what is necessary to assure both our public and the agencies that oversee the reporting and the work that is done by the Auditor Controller's office, and recognizing once again the excellence in that work. So I'll step down to present that and invite you up, Ms. Cohen, to speak.
Thank you, Chair Long. I have no comments other than to ask my staff, who's responsible for financial reporting, to come up and share this with me. It's getting harder and harder every year to address the questions and comments that they come back with every year when they evaluate our CAFR and make suggestions based on changes in accounting pronouncements. So these are the fine folks who make it happen for the county.
And I know the Board members remember, know what that CAFR looks like. It's a document about yay thick.
Oh, it's not that thick. And it's on the website.
All of that is... All that to say that it is on the website. It is very much a document available to the public. And certainly worthy of the recognition for your outstanding work.
I can see it. It's over the other side.
Okay, 10:30, time certain. I don't have to receive and file anything, do I, Roberta? No, okay. All right, 10:30, time certain. We're going to have some time now to have a discussion about the development of countywide strategic plan. This item is being brought forward by the Chief Executive Office, certainly in consultation with me in my role as Chair, to look at what we have done in the past regarding strategic planning and working with our leadership in this county to look at ways to always improve both the product and the customer service of what we do in providing services to our public. And the long history certainly has been evidenced by the fiscal position that we have relative to our peers, and that we have had good, strong, I think, both cooperation and communications within our system. But we have not truly had a systemic process to create a vision for the future. And what is being proposed here for a countywide strategic plan and development of that, as you'll hear from Mr. Carroll, is a much more detailed and intensive process, but one that has already been committed to by our Executive Committee and Leadership Team, is one that will be valuable and I believe provide for us a five-year projection, a plan that's going to both set for us what we want for our near-term objectives and actions for the future, but also for that five-year period. And also some measurement criteria to validate progress so that we decide what our priorities are and how to deliver those priorities and objectives, and then we're able to also validate the progress on them. And I think as the attached materials show you, it's a chart, it's a system, it's an engagement, and it's something that I believe we already have a strong commitment, again from the Leadership Team, that this will be a valuable process for us to go through. So I'll turn it over to Matt Carroll to carry out the details on this.
All right, thank you, Chair Long, Board members. As you said, and as noted in the Board Letter, the county has a long history of effective planning and is evidenced by our fiscal position and our reputation for operational effectiveness. What we're proposing here today, though, is exactly what you said, a comprehensive countywide strategic plan. Although we have had point planning sessions on a variety of critical topics, we haven't had the opportunity to do this countywide strategic plan at this point. And the Board Letter points out several benefits, chief among those being it would serve as a strategic plan, will serve as a foundation for agency and departments to base their strategic business and operational plans on. One of the things we hear a lot about in Lean Six Sigma and our Service Excellence Program is we're going through and developing departmental plans and strategic plans, is it would really be beneficial to have an overreaching plan and guidance from the Board to flow down into their departmental strategic and operational planning. So that's a big part of this. In addition to providing that foundation for agency and department plans, it would provide a guidepost or serve as a contextual guidepost for agencies and departments as they present recommendations to your Board. They'd have a chance to say, "Hey, is this consistent with the strategic plan and the outcomes adopted by the Board?" Likewise, it would serve as a contextual guidepost for your Board in considering those recommendations. Is this department or agency recommending an action on our Board's part that's consistent or potentially inconsistent with the strategic plan? So good guideposts on both ends of the spectrum. As envisioned, the strategic plan will provide some additional information to your Board to help map which programs really tie into strategic outcomes or end states defined as high priority by your Board. And finally, it will provide exactly what you said, supervise along, some measurement criteria for you to assess, your Board to assess how we're progressing in this area of strategic planning. So with that said, and those benefits, there are various forms strategic plans can take. The one we're proposing is really on the practical, and I think that's consistent with Ventura County's history. We're proposing a process that's on the practical side of the spectrum, or the practical end of the spectrum, I anticipate. When we're done, we'll end up with a strategic plan that's probably several dozen pages as opposed to several hundred pages, which you may see strategic plans in some of the larger jurisdictions. Unfortunately, those larger plans tend to sit on a shelf, and they're a little overwhelming, and they rarely get utilized. So again, we're proposing a process that's on the practical side of the spectrum. In the Board Letter, you had two exhibits. Exhibit one gave an overview of the timeline and the proposed steps. Exhibit two gave an overview of, or gave a sample of what will be in the core part of the plan. And this slide here, I just have a couple slides that are subsets of the attachment. This is a subset of Exhibit Two. This slide provides an example of what will be in the core of the plan, and that being strategic goals here. Make sure I know how to use this pointer. Strategic goal here, which will be defined by your Board, objectives and measurement criteria gathered into focus areas. And I'll just walk through how we're going to gather these. The process will start with individual visioning sessions with each member of your Board, where we'll go in for about 90 minutes to two hours with each Board Member and have you define what you feel based on your position, your belief system, and the position you feel your constituents in or advocate, what your desired end states are for the county. And those desired end states will be defined, and they'll take the term a strategic goal. So your Board, at the end of those visioning sessions, you'll actually go into those visioning sessions with a myriad of examples, but you'll be free to add to those, you'll be free to change them, you'll be free to, of course, come up with your own as makes sense for Ventura County. So you'll have some sample material to get you started. And when you come out of that strategic, or those visioning sessions, we anticipate we'll have several dozen strategic goals defined by the various members of your Board. That's after we do some consolidation. And CEO staff will take those strategic goals as defined by your Board, consolidate those that are redundant or duplicative. And then we'll also, after those visioning sessions, gather them into county, common county business areas. So just to step back, your end states will take the form of what we call strategic goals. So this item right here, and you see they're relatively high level. CEO staff will then, as I said, consolidate those, come back, and group them into county primary business or operational areas, what we're calling focus groups. And those focus groups or focus areas will mirror common county business areas such as healthcare, public safety, human services, but we'll title them and we'll refer to them as makes sense to Ventura County. Basically, we'll look at what the end states are that your Board defined and group those and title them in a draft manner that makes sense for what you defined as your strategic goals. So that'll be the beginning sections of our, the beginning efforts. We'll then take those strategic goals grouped into focus areas, and we'll convene subgroups of departmental agency and department heads, because they're really your subject matter experts on what's practical, what's doable within the budgetary constraints, to get to your strategic goals. They'll go into subgroups and define nearer term, nearer term actions, what we're going to call objectives down here. The subgroups will define objectives that, when completed, lead to the end states or contribute to the end states your Board desires or has defined. They'll also define and recommend measurement criteria, and those measurement criteria are practical gauges that your Board will be able to use to measure our progress toward achieving your end state. So when all is said and done, we'll have this one example, probably several dozen of these in our strategic plan, if not multiple dozen of these in our strategic plan. So that is, in a nutshell, is the sample of what the core of the plan will be like. This is just example we pulled out of another jurisdiction. I will say the plan will have other things, and it'll have the mapping of programs to specific strategic goals, so your Board will have the opportunity to see which programs map to which strategic goals. And it'll have what we call a SWOT analysis by major county business areas, where we'll have the agency and department heads, while you're doing your visioning session, go through and define strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, things that will guide their parameters towards setting objectives. What are my practical constraints and opportunities towards setting the objectives that meet your Board's end state? So that, in a nutshell, is what will be in the plan as well as some additional information. That's Exhibit Two. That's exhibit two. Exhibit one in the board letter provides a very high level framework of how we're proposing to go about this as far as steps and timeline. It's broken into three areas, planning, preparation, and execution. The planning phase essentially completes with today, with the presentation of the work, the format. This format, this approach has been vetted through the Service Excellence Council and the executive committee. If your board elects to go forward today, we'll move from planning to preparation. The preparation occurs over the next two months where your board will go through the visioning sessions and that will occur after you return from your break in the September timeframe. Parallel to that, the agency and department heads will be doing the SWOT analysis that we talked about, which are the practical constraints around their objectives. That will conclude with the drafting of, the draft vision and end states by CEO staff, the consolidation of those redundant items and the drafting of those into a draft, a list of end states. We'll then move into the execution phase in the October timeframe where we'll kick it off with a joint strategic planning session between members of your board and agency and department heads. And that's up here, it's scheduled in the, the October timeframe. We'll, we're, we'll get everyone on the same page. The agency and department heads will have a chance to look at the end states defined by your board, the, the focus areas that, that will dictate the grouping of agency and department heads to define objectives. That'll be a day-long session likely. We'll then move after that into two months of develop, developing the objectives and measurement criteria. Then we hope to come back to your board either with a second joint session and at a minimum with a presentation to your board to adopt the strategic plan. Likely we'll have a, a second joint session in the December timeframe where everyone will have a chance to look at the draft, make final comments. And then we'll be back to your board with the plan for adoption in the December timeframe. Could run a little bit into January. Our main focus is to have it on, on the completion list and ready for your board to use as background in the upcoming budget process for this coming fiscal year, or next fiscal year. So that's the description of the process and the sample. And with that, I can answer any questions your board may have.
Okay, yes.
Matt, you know, the question I have is are we going to hire a consultant, number one, and is this going to take additional funding to, you know, to, to prepare and to, to service?
Good questions. Our intent is to use a facilitator for the joint planning session. Potentially, we'll decide if we want to use them for the agency and department head subgroup meetings to facilitate those. Likely not. It's likely just a, a single facilitator expense and then the time of staff is indicated in the board letter. We think this will be well under 40 hours of effort for agency and department heads, probably closer to 40 hours for those in, in complex areas, probably less than 40 hours, and your board's time. That will be the primary expense is staff time. CEO staff will do a lot of the legwork, the majority of the legwork toward compiling the drafts. The facilitator, we anticipate in the neighborhood of $5,000 to $10,000 to facilitate that session. That's actually well above their daily rate, but we're going to allow some time for a, a day or two of preparation and a day or two wrap-up with the facilitator. So we think it'll be a very modest expense and a prudent expense for what we're talking about.
And normally, you know, I've had some goals and objective sessions in the past, you know, as a council member. Are we going to have it here at the board room or some offsite?
The plan is to, to take you offsite. It would be a publicly noticed meeting, so the public could attend because it will be multiple board members. But as we did last time, we likely will, we're, we're looking to see if we can go across the street to the Human Services Agency. They have a great training facility or, or conference room there. If not, we may need to go outside of the county facilities. But our intent right now is to schedule this joint session for probably the third week in October and we'll firm that down as soon as we get approval to proceed. And then we'll get the facility lined up. But that will be a public meeting in a, in another location. Thank you.
Other questions? No?
Motion to approve?
There's a motion to approve and move ahead?
I feel much more comfortable with the plan than I do without one issue that everybody raised last night.
The one issue I raised last time was just the facilitation and making sure, and I've talked about that just recently and stuff, so I feel like we got a good chance of being real successful with this.
And I support it because it doesn't cost more money and then you can still work together with and get a better cohesion with the team. I think it's a good idea.
Okay, motion to second. Let's vote on this. And that passes unanimously. I'd like to thank Mr. Carroll for the groundwork on this. I, I think it's an excellent direction for us to go in as a county. We haven't done a, a, something like this on this scale. And it'll, as anything, becomes a process that I, I absolutely believe will give us some good direction in the future to, direction both for our managers and the teams we work with, but for us as a board to set our priorities. So I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, board members, we have a receive and file action item, oh no, we have item 37. Huh? What do I have to do? Oh, receive and file, let's move on that first. Motion to second. And that passes and then the addendum, item, item 37. Mr. Nicole.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, we have before you today the first reading of the three-year agreement with the Ventura County Professional Peace Officers Association. Those are the officers in probation, in the harbor, and in the airports. This, following our request from all of our bargaining units, all 11, is the reduction in the county's contribution with the employees picking up 3% of their retirement contribution. And in the case of one bargaining unit where they had purchased a safety benefit using their own money, there is only an amount of about 2.3% that we can have them pick up for their retirement because that is their only remaining portion. And there'll be a reduction in the salary in those classifications of the balance to get to the 3% in order to achieve our pension reform of transferring the cost to the pension to the people who are the ultimate benefits as annuitants in retirement. Also, this calls for, as with other bargaining units, new hires after the date of the approval of this contract will be required to pick up all of their retirement contribution going forward. And there is one language change regarding how disciplined procedures are paid for. This will require that the party that does not prevail is responsible for the cost of the arbitrator in the system. This is a three-year agreement. We started negotiating in February. We went to mediation in July and we, it went to a vote of the bargaining unit and they approved this, reluctantly, I believe, but understanding their responsibilities to this increased cost in the retirement system, they in fact came to agreement with us.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, there's a recommended action? Motion? There's motion and a second?
Good work, John.
Please vote.
Thank you.
And thank you to the, to the labor table and to the workforce. Vote.
It's Leslie Shannon, Jim Dombowski, and Tabine Cosio. At this point, I act as their spokesperson, but they are the ones at the table.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, board members, we're going into closed session. Will there be announcements?
No announcements.
Okay, then we will adjourn from closed session. Thank you, and we'll see you next week.